Your attention please. We call this board meeting of the Nelson County Board of Education to order on January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three at five thirty P. M. Would you please join David O. Daniel, student at the academy, as he leads us in the pledge? Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you, David. Okay, the second item on our agenda is the annual board planning process, meeting goals.
So each January, we review our financials for the year. Tonight, we'll see that through the financial audit. We also, by law, review current and future revenue and expenditure patterns through the draft budget, which is a, which is an eight-month process. As you know, too, we have a large crowd here tonight because we're evaluating and determining next steps with the facility planning and having some conversations around that.
Any comment? Thank you. Okay, our next section is our community and stakeholder engagement. And I think Kristen's going to bring our sheet up, or sheets. Thank you. Now, before we get started, this is my comment. I would like to apologize for the usage of the word "we" I used at our last board meeting, in which I made no direct mention of names or schools or districts. The word "we" was used in speaking in general terms. My mistake. I used it, and I own it. If I have caused disrespect, devalued, or displeasure with what I said, I am truly sorry. While working fifteen years in this district, I worked with great teachers, and I knew the countless hours that were put into being an effective teacher. I will use my words more wisely next time. Thank you. The first person on our list is Ms. Rebecca McGuire-Dye. Okay, Rebecca, one moment. You know what I gotta do here? I gotta read the policy. Three minutes for individual, five minutes for a group. We will be, you will be timed. And the last word here is, please be kind. If you see my hand go after, you've heard that buzzer, your time is up, okay? So everybody will get their say.
Before you start my buzzer, can I take this off of here?
Okay.
I'm just real nervous.
You're so, I'm so sorry.
All right, tell me, tell me when it goes, okay? I'm here as an individual, so I get three minutes.
Yes, ma'am, you're right.
So I'm gonna talk really fast. All right, I think a bunch of people are here tonight to talk about something that's not gonna come in unless I have enough time, 'cause first off, I'm gonna start with something called conflicts of interest, something that I am very confused about. As a former board member, a member of the long-term planning committee, taxpayer, mom, aunt, lifelong education lover, I'm here to comment on this. I want to remind Mr. Norman and Ms. Deaton about an ad that was in the Kentucky Standard. It looked like a news article, but when you got to the fine print, it was actually a political ad. And it said, it, it, what I took from it, 'cause I may note at the time, it's how I was able to recall it, that the board members were bad and you all were gonna be good. Thank you, I appreciate that. Because unless I'm mistaken, that ad also said the board needed to be cleaned up, which implied something dirty was going on there. Well, I think that conflicts of interest are dirty, and I think they don't need any part in our schools and our kids. By conflict of interest, I'm referring to the oath taken by all board members, but most recently by the two of its new board members, that says, and I quote, "Being duly sworn, you will not become interested directly or indirectly in any contract with or any claims against the board." This tells me that conflicts of interest are against your oath. According to the state campaign finance website, Mr. Norman, you took thousands of dollars from parties not in your vote in district, from people who are currently suing the district or directly affiliated with the group doing so, to stop the facility's plan. How is the lawsuit against the district not a claim against the schools, against the board, and not a conflict of interest? So how I can even think there's not a conflict when your main financial contributors were against the facility plan, that you won't vote no tonight, and the rest of us are out the door? I struggle with that, and I know you, so it's hard for me to get there. And then, Ms. Deaton, unfortunately, you weren't able to call me back last week, but I don't understand how you took the same oath as Mr. Norman, but you're one of the signers on the lawsuit I just talked about. How's this not a conflict of interest? You all been on this board seventeen days and are gonna vote on a plan that impacts all of our kids, all of our future? I mean, I don't have a magic eight ball, 'cause I didn't think that was in the rules, but I would've brought it and asked how you were gonna vote on these contracts tonight, and I bet what it was said, it's decidedly so, and I'm gonna tell you, it shouldn't be. You shouldn't vote at all, you have a conflict. The only right thing to do here is for you all to refuse to vote tonight on these contracts and stay out of the facility plan. I don't, I mean, maybe there's another way, but you need to convince me, and I think a lot of other people here, that you don't have a conflict.
Okay, thank you. Next is John Hammond.
Yeah, I'm John Hammond. I've actually a two thousand four grad.
Hold on.
Oh, sorry. I'll wait.
Till you hear the beep.
It's like a race. All right, I'm a two thousand four grad of Nelson County High School. I actually began work in this school district in two thousand eight, when I graduated from college. I spent four years at Nelson County High School, and I've been at TNHS since it opened. I'm currently a teacher within the Agriculture Collab, and I teach both Nelson County students and Thomas Nelson students daily. You need to know my history with this, because I have a direct insight into how we work as a district and in both high schools. I have three issues I wanna discuss with you. One is district leadership, two, school board leadership, and three, hasty decision-making. My first, my first four years at NCHS, I had five different principals. Five. Never did I truly feel like I was part of a team. Actually, I felt like an outcast. If I think back on that time, I actually dreaded. Wes Bradley came along. He terrified the living daylights out of me, and here's why. He observed me teach, he gave me feedback, gave me meaningful feedback. He cared about me, he was intelligent, he took an interest in what I was doing. For the first time, I had an admin of that type that was able to take such an interest and committed to help me grow as an educator. No matter your opinion of Wes, no matter what it is, I can tell you mine. He's the best administrator I've ever had, in good times and in bad. He's had my back, just as he would any other staff member in this district. Wes is who I credit my personal successes and my accolades, which I have many, and my growth as an educator. For that reason, I no one trusts his vision as superintendent. Your jobs as elected school board members are to look at tough issues and make well-calculated decisions, putting personal opinions and differences aside, and being present for the students, teachers, and stakeholders of our district. I can tell you that I often look to you guys as inspiration and guidance, and genuine support for my ag program. When hearing that a board member says they're not proud of what we're doing as a district and as educators, I was taken aback. Furthermore, when a comment is made about how staff are not working long enough, I truly began to understand the disconnect, and I realize your apology, and I appreciate that. However, I invite all of you to come spend a day with me and see what I do, along with all these other teachers that are here. We'll show you what we do each day. Trust me. Finally, I'm not for or against any decision you may be voting on. I really, you know, it's hard to have an opinion when I don't know the answers, and I don't know, really, the whole purpose and point and all that stuff behind it. I understand the dynamics involved in the process, it's not something that should be rushed. Do not rush this decision. Also, this needs to be a comprehensive plan that decides what to do with K through twelve in our district. It has taken time to build a separate culture within our collab that didn't exist before. We know that it takes time to build a culture, we know that it takes time to make sure we're all united. In the collab, we've been doing that for a long time, so please, do not vote.
Okay, next we have Clarissa Morgan. Wait until you hear the beep.
Okay. My name's Clarissa Morgan, I have a sophomore at Thomas Nelson High School, and I would like to start out by saying thank you to our teachers for the support and care they show our kids every day. Ms. Berry, your comments last week regarding how you didn't feel teachers today were putting in the time, working enough hours, or teaching our kids to be good citizens and good people, I felt was completely disrespectful and out of touch with what I see going on in our schools today. Missing opportunities to go into the, into the schools like you did last week at Thomas Nelson. You may have seen the great work and care that teachers are putting in. Teach, I see teachers staying after for support hours, teachers making phone calls to parents to brag on their kids and talk about good things going on in the classroom, teachers sending postcards in the mail to say good job or give encouragement. Thomas Nelson has a whole day committed to general serve each year, where students go out and complete projects for the community. My son's kindergarten teacher came and watched one of his basketball games last week. If that's not making lasting connections and caring for students, I do not know what is. So teachers, please accept a heartfelt thank you from a mom who sees you and truly appreciates you. This brings me to my next comment, on the merging of high schools. I do not feel this is the best solution for our kids. In merging fourteen hundred-plus kids into one building, I do feel you will lose those one-on-one connections and care that students are receiving today, and kids will sleep, slip through the cracks. I feel one of the greatest things about Thomas Nelson is their Care and Connect and house structure. That twenty to thirty minutes kids get to spend with their teacher and a small group of peers is awesome, and I think you see benefits from that throughout the whole school environment. I do not see how that can be maintained or work as effectively in a school with fourteen hundred-plus kids. Students will fall through the cracks. We've been talking about missed opportunities for our students for almost two years now. I'm not sure how putting all these kids in one school solves that. I think it will create even more missed opportunities, because you're gonna be cutting down half the amount of kids that could participate in extracurricular activities. The community campus model has been discussed for almost two years, and in a week's time, we have completely changed course to merging high schools, which were separated in the first place because of overcrowding, and we have done this without providing any data or plan to the community. I really hope that you do not rush any of these decisions. This is our kids' future at stake. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matthew Fletcher. Wait for the beep.
So I am Matthew Fletcher, I am the director of bands at Thomas Nelson High School. I would like to question why we had to slow down the community campus merger talks, but we are able to pull this decision through in a week? I would also question why finances are being cited as a reason, but there will be a cost to renovate NCHS to accommodate the students once again through overpopulation. Another point would be why are we valuing athletics over the purpose of school and education? It is not to devalue the athletic experiences of high school athletes and the life lessons that they learn, but athletics should never be the driving force in an academic slash educational, an educational institution. You could also bring up that the newly-elected board members are doing exactly what the previous board was accused of by not allowing community discussion and transparency to the process. Additionally, given that the merged high school will house about fourteen, about one thousand four hundred students, I believe that would put NCHS back at capacity, and we will be right back to the same two high school discussions sooner than later. I challenge you to face the challenges that we all admit the county is facing, and to do the hard work that you were elected to do to make all Nelson County schools successful and about the kids, not about personal agendas. It's easy to take the easy path, but that's not what you all should be doing. Do not take the quick fix. You can feel free to reference one of my parents. If this merger goes through, they are immediately moving their middle school student, which you all are very concerned about, to a different school due to the changes. They will either homeschool or send them to a different school outside of Nelson County schools. I would also like to, you know, acknowledge Mr. Bradley and how personal he has been with me. I used to work at a district for two years where the superintendent didn't even remember hiring me as a teacher. Mr. Bradley has multiple times acknowledged me as a teacher of this district. I would also like to point out the comment of teachers not working, long enough hours. I put in a fifteen-hour workday on Friday. Taught school all day, went to the basketball game, which I saw a couple of board members attend, and I stayed there with the band students later, 'cause I did not want them waiting outside in the cold for their parents. I wanted them to have a warm space to stay in, which I left the band room open. And the following day, I went to judge all district auditions and support our high school students auditioning for these extra experiences outside of our school. And that was also another day, a Saturday, which doesn't accommodate into my work week or my contract hours. I would also like to point out that there are several Thomas Nelson performing arts students that I'm speaking on behalf today as a group, and they were not able to be here due to an opportunity provided by Thomas Nelson.
Next will be Stephanie Robinson. Wait till the beep.
Teachers are getting used to these sounds, we do this all the time. I'm gonna be honest, I've sat and typed and wrote and texted, and everything that's been presented to us is eloquent and well-informed and professional, and I stand and echo even John Hammond, who I proudly graduated Nelson County with, class of two thousand four, my man. And I saw, I lived the high school shoulder to shoulder, not being able to get in my locker. I took a job in the district with Title One, and I was a substitute, and now I proudly work here in this building. I have witnessed with both of the schools, the high schools being open, that our students, they have the power of choice from the middle school, in which their pathways can be aligned with their future. In high school, when they're about to go out into the working world, and they have to make more choices that impact their lives for their future. Thomas Nelson has saved Cardinals that needed to find another space. Nelson County has saved Generals that maybe needed to find another space. My middle schoolers have been able to meet with different colleagues and leaders and find where they fit in, and we're all working hard to provide that. The hypocrisy that has been pointed out of the vitriol and anger and nastiness, really, over the past couple of years with these discussions, and then to ramrod something like this so quickly, I don't have a lot of great things to say besides what I tell my students every day. We have to leave these walls better than we find them. And if you're saying students first, it also starts with the teacher's support. I would love to see all of these faces at a concert, or a show, or a presentation. And I tell my broadcasting students that once we put it out there, it's out there. So adults, I'm asking you also to be careful what you put out there, because it can't be taken back. And if you want to see students first, come to my class and watch what we do. Watch what I do and the hours that I put in. Watch the students give feedback overwhelmingly that they don't support this either. And I will speak with my, rest of my time, given that echo a lot of my colleagues that spoke to me also. I worked at Nelson County under Mr. Ord. It was a mess. There was a bathroom fire. He stood in the hallway, cross-arms, and watched a lot of things go down. We were so resolute in making that change. He has brought this change. He deserves the time to continue working us through this. My class was given four hundred dollars for flex seating. That hasn't happened before. Please allow this time, so we can see change. We know that change is frightening, but as adults, what are we modeling to our students in our community? And it starts with you all, it starts with all of us in this room. Thank you.
Our next person will be Kristen Cecil, I think. Did I say it right? Wait for the buzz.
Good evening, I'd like to start by introducing myself. My name is Kristen Cecil, I'm a former graduate of Thomas Nelson, class of two thousand fourteen, and a two-year alumni of Nelson County High School. I was in the first graduating class of Thomas Nelson and on Mr. Bradley's committee that was created before the schools were split. We gave ideas on how to bring what we had at Nelson County and give new ways to begin fresh. This was a hard transition for everyone. We resented the school board at the time for making the decision. However, living through and being that test subject or guinea pig graduating class, I can tell you that I learned more and thrived at Thomas Nelson than I ever did at county. I was not a bad student at either location, but given the opportunities for smaller classes, where I had more one-on-one focus, and the ability to be seen and heard by my instructors, made school a lot better for me. At Nelson County, I had thirty to thirty-five kids in each class with rows and rows of desks. When we came to Thomas Nelson, we had alternative seating in many of our classrooms, and no more than twenty to twenty-five kids per class. This gave the opportunity for teachers to make meaningful connections to their students, and I can tell you, every teacher that I had at Thomas Nelson, and I cannot recall all those from county. This is mainly due to the relationships made with those teachers, as the smaller class size allowed for this. Moving on, I have a fourteen-year-old daughter who has transferred from Barstown, who completely turned her life around since enrolling before fall break. Grades are up, and she says she feels at home, cared for by her instructors, and they take the time to explain all the things she needs to know. At Barstown, she said there were no time as the classes were full and the teachers didn't care. I understand this isn't the other high school in the district, but it makes for a point. I can't speak on that, as I've only taken her word for it, but I can tell you that there's a huge difference in her lifestyle and choices, all from transferring into the Nelson County District. My main concern is that schools will merge and children will not get the education they need nor deserve. Today's society needs more one-on-one time, I myself work in early childhood education, and I can say this firsthand experience, that children seven years ago were into more group learning. In today's, they are more independent and no longer codependent on their classmates. They thrive in a smaller setting, as many children have social anxiety and do not do well with a lot of other people in the classroom. As a parent, alumni, and coach, I want to have my voice be heard, that this merger is bananas and once again unfair to those students that would endure it. Why have history repeat itself? Take Thomas Nelson's word and lead by example, and show the community you hear our words, as we are who has voted in the board representatives.
Okay, our next speaker will be Holly Smith. Wait till the buzz.
Hello, my name is Holly Smith, current teacher at Thomas Nelson High School. I have two young sons in the district. One's at Cox's Creek, he's in the fifth grade, the other one's at Cox's Creek, and he's a kindergartner. So I feel I have a very vested interest in what's happening here. I wanna start by saying, when I came into this district, they introduced me to Thomas Nelson, and I was like, this school's talking about purple cows, eating oatmeal, community collaborations, care, connect, create, house, house system? What is, what is happening here? And I decided to take the job, and I stayed at Thomas Nelson. I've been at Thomas Nelson now for seven years. So every day, I go to Thomas Nelson, I listen to these students. Why can't we wear hoodies? Why do I have to go to this collab? Why do we have G-term? My eyes were surely open last week, when all this talk about merging high schools happened. I have never seen students fight for Thomas Nelson the way they did last week. These students love Thomas Nelson. They are ate up with it, and I didn't see it. I didn't see it, because we constantly fuss about the little things. I didn't see it. But man, look at this place. Look at this place. Everybody in here, fighting for what you believe is right for students. I see a lot of Thomas Nelson people in this room. I commend all of you all. I commend every one of you. It takes a lot of courage. My Care and Connect, we had a very brief, open-room discussion about this merger, and my Care and Connect just showed me such heart and love for a place. A place. Isn't that part of our district motto? A place? People, I can't leave my friends, I'll get lost there. People, place, a purpose, serving something bigger than ourselves? Wes, I appreciate you. I appreciate you more than you know, because I was lost, and I have never been at a place that I consider home. I wouldn't leave this district right now to go back to the college level for anything. I wouldn't leave this district right now to go anywhere else, because you believe in the people that you put in place to work for you. Some people out there could say, you, you social media boo-hooers, I'm his puppet. You're right. Because a good leader puts good puppets behind them.
Our next speaker will be Josh Bunch. Wait till the beep.
Yeah, there's no need to clap, I don't think I can follow DJ Holly Smith there, I'll do my best, so. Yeah, so my name is Josh Bunch, I do live in the county, ten thirteen Whispering Oak Drive, and I do work at Thomas Nelson, but I'm here tonight really as a citizen, as a taxpayer. I preface my remarks by communicating an assumption to the school board. I believe that each of you are involved because you care about young people. I believe that, and that you want them to have the best educational experience we can produce. It's my heart, I'm a Christ follower, I wanna do my best to show love and respect to all people. And so I want you to know that I think we're on the same team. I thank you for your service, and so I'm working for the assumption you got good things at heart. And so I'm working for the assumption you've got good things at heart. I'm still not certain, even looking at the agenda tonight, that we're actually voting on unifying a high school. I'm just not certain if that's true. If we're going to do that tonight. Sometimes information is miscommunicated. I'm hoping that's incorrect. I'm hoping that what I'm told is somehow mistaken. I was not at the last board meeting, but I did watch it in its entirety via video. I heard a little discussion about it, nothing about a vote coming up inside a week's time. Before such a thing would even be considered, I believe it would be the moral responsibility of the board to clearly communicate their rationale for such a move, backed by solid reasoning, some amount of real data. In my opinion, to do anything other would be a violation of the public trust with which So if this vote actually is a reality, if that's even happening, I'm not even concerned about the outcome at this point. I think if we take it tonight, we're already defeated. I don't think we should take the vote. I'll kind of echo what John said. I believe that those who may have called for it probably believe you're doing the right thing. However, it is not a good and right thing. I don't know if it's a legal move. I don't know. Maybe you're legally within your rights to do it, but I believe it would not be an ethical move regardless. So I implore you, cancel this vote. Let's approach this in a publicly transparent way. Thanks.
I think next is Stephen Marshall. Wait toward the beep.
My name's Stephen Marshall. For those who don't know me, I worked for the school system for 13 years. I retired. I've worked in pretty much every school in the district. I was a custodian here, I was first facility lead at Thomas Nelson, and I went on to become a maintenance lead. Mine's more of a personal remark tonight. Thanks to Mr. Bradley and a lot of the teachers in both schools, they helped my grandson out a whole lot. He was a troubled child, he had a rough childhood, and in the eighth grade, he was struggling. And they had some classes that some kids could take, and it had Nelson County and Thomas Nelson, it was down to the drama down here, and it totally changed that young feller. Totally changed him. He ended up going to Thomas Nelson, and he's almost a straight-A student now. He's in wrestling. He's a positive student, very positive. And that's thanks to the teachers at Thomas Nelson and Nelson County and Mr. Bradley, which I, on a personal note, I trust him to do whatever he has to do that would help our kids. Because that's what we're here for, guys. We're here to help our kids. You know, everything else is irrelevant. We're here to help make sure that they get the best education we can give them. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Our next person is Grant Ross.
My name is Grant Ross, and I graduated from Thomas Nelson in 2015, and I am set to graduate from the University Kentucky College of Medicine this May. Tonight, I speak for the Thomas Nelson alumni, and I hope to provide one more voice and a unified cry to save our school. As a student during the time of the split, I believe that I am uniquely positioned to lend a valuable perspective to this conversation. I remember going from a one-hallway middle school in New Haven to the large Nelson County campus. I remember how it felt to be lost in the hallways, like how it felt to be just another face in a room and to be completely overlooked by coaches, because they didn't know my name before I showed up to the school. I remember the comments made by some board members about Thomas Nelson, and how people predicted its failure, in no small part due to the people that it would be comprised of, both students and leadership. And to be fair, our leadership had quite a challenge on their hands. You see, you can only tell a 14-year-old so many times that they're a second-rate community member, before unfortunately, they begin to believe you. So while our leadership may have had confidence in us as future leaders, the sentiment was not always shared. In 2012, the social experiment of Thomas Nelson began, and I'll never forget sitting in that classroom the first day, going over phrases that would go on to shape so much of my life to this day. Generals leave this place better than we found it. Growth mindset. The answer to how is yes. We sweat the small stuff. We eat our oatmeal, we have a forward lean, and most of all, we're going to be a purple cow. If any of you haven't heard these sayings before, that's simply because you didn't have the great pleasure of experiencing the Thomas Nelson High School culture. And let me be clear, it is a culture. A culture marked by a unique, shared language, a passion for helping those around you, and for finding your place in your local, state, national, and even global community. Culture building is not easy, and I'd be lying to you if I said we loved it from day one. All of a sudden, we were told we needed to buy into our own future stories. We need to sit up and participate in class, and we would actually be held accountable if we didn't. It was a harsh adjustment for most involved. However, slowly but surely, the sayings became part of our everyday language, and they began to impact the way we perceive not only ourselves, but those around us. Eventually, we weren't just saying these things anymore, they were what we did, because we are generals. And before we knew it, our leadership's attitude and belief in us became our own. And in three short years before I graduated, we raced test scores, we competed at state level in athletics, and we lowered our dropout rate, making generational impacts on the families of this community. And more importantly than trophies and cases or test scores, the mindset of a whole school of young adults changed, from that of self-deprecation to growth. We started to believe that we could accomplish anything, and that's truly the greatest gift that you could give a developing mind. The courage to believe in yourself, because you know that everyone else around you does. How could a school made up of children from the other side of the bridge accomplish all these things? Because the answer to how is yes. And after a decade of continued success at Thomas Nelson, honestly, I find it baffling that we are even having this conversation. I understand that our county is facing a problem, and I don't have the answer.
Very much. Thank you. Our next presenter would be Michelle Conley. Well, wait a minute. Three quick three minutes, and he was speaking for a group. Please, and thank you. Okay, speaking for a group, okay.
Yes, thank you. Just two more minutes.
Okay. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Can I go? Okay. I understand that our county is facing problems at the middle school level. Maybe this seems like a new problem to some people in this room, but having come from New Haven, I was under the impression that having under-resourced middle schools has been a longstanding issue for this county. Thankfully, this problem doesn't exist at the high school level anymore, but it stands to reason that if the schools are merged, one thing is guaranteed, the problem will soon exist here again. One thing, however, that is not guaranteed, is that this will even fix the problem at the middle school level. Surely, the wiser decision would be to address these problems more individually. And to be clear, I don't know exactly what the fix is, but I also know I wasn't elected to figure it out. You all were. And more importantly, you were elected to listen to the people that are in this room, that make up this county, and to represent them. And judging by the pushback that you can clearly see in this room tonight, by the fact that I left a radiation oncology clinic early and had to skip out on patients to drive back to defend the school that I attended, shows that you aren't listening very well. And to add insult to injury, no one in this room feels as though our voices are being heard, or that you may even care to hear them at all. So instead of telling people in this room and in this community that we ought to listen and hush, because we don't know what's best for ourselves or our children anymore, seems to me like the board members would do much better at fulfilling their duties if they listened, went back to the drawing board, put their brains together, and came up with a plan that was much more agreeable and a better long-term success for this county. Thank you for your time.
Okay, our next speaker. Our next speaker is Michelle Conley.
I want to thank you all for allowing me to share my voice tonight. I am Michelle Conley. I am the workforce leader at Thomas Nelson High School. I first want to thank Ms. Bowling for going along with me on a site visit to visit one of our seniors at a profession-based experience on Friday. I also want to thank Ms. Deaton, Mr. Jackie, and Mr. Norman for taking the time out of your Friday. You spent a large chunk of your time to come in and talk to our students and our staff, and that was very much appreciated. I hope that you hear that what I'm trying to share is a little different perspective, that I feel valued and appreciated like I've never had before, and that I love my students, and I know that every leader in Thomas Nelson and across the district love and want what's best for students. This is my fifth year at Thomas Nelson. I have not been asked to share my voice, but after sitting in last Tuesday's meeting, during the meeting and after, I really, I felt sick, I felt sad, I felt confused, and I just felt led to share my voice. I've been working since I was 16. You may wonder why I want to share that, but I do have an extensive work history, not that that means a lot. However, before I accepted a position at Thomas Nelson and in this district five years ago, I asked a trusted former employee of the district what her thoughts were, before I moved from a different district. Her words were to me, "If you were asking me one or two years ago, I would have said no. But there's new leadership, and I would encourage you to make the move now." Over the course of my, yes, 34 years in the workforce, I have never felt more valued as a human and as an employee, and that says a lot. Thomas Nelson in this district, my voice and ideas are heard, I'm appreciated, I'm empowered, I'm encouraged, and trusted to do what is best for our students. Not only at Thomas Nelson, but like I said, across the district. We provide unique experience that prepares students for their future story. I do not, nor have I ever lived in Nelson County, but it feels like home, and my students are like family, and give me purpose and passion to do what I love. That has always been and will always be my purpose, doing what is best for students. I could probably have a different opportunity outside this district, or in another field, but I don't want to. I've actually been approached to apply for a position at my son's middle school, which is outside of this district, and they have excellent, they have excellent leaders, excellent teachers. It's a great school. I don't want to. I love the culture at Thomas Nelson, I love my students and my family. We have the environment to where we can have small groups, and we can truly get to know them, care, connect, and create, and that's what we do every day. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Hannah Shields.
My name is Hannah Shields, and I'm alumni of Thomas Nelson High School. I was a part of the second graduating class, and I'm here to share my perspective and hopefully provide you with a little insight in your decision tonight. So I spent my freshman year at Nelson County High School. I was kind of a student that flew under the radar, so I didn't really stand out, didn't really get in trouble, very kind of in the middle. So I didn't understand how important grades were, how important doing well in the ACT was if you plan on going to college. I didn't understand any of that until I went to Thomas Nelson. So the next school year, when we moved to Thomas Nelson, it was a shock. To be honest, it was a hard year. No one really wanted to be there, not even some of the teachers, because we felt like we didn't really have a choice. So, but I had more opportunities. I took some challenging classes, I started playing sports. But that dang purple cow wouldn't stop looking at me, you know? So in time, we realized that Thomas Nelson was our legacy. We took ownership of that. We bought into the culture, we really owned it. We cheered at House Pride rallies, we ate breakfast with our parents at Dean's List. And these are all opportunities that I would not have had if I stayed at Nelson County. And not to say that Thomas Nelson is better, or Nelson County is bad, or anything like that. It's just different. It allowed me to have smaller class sizes, closer relationships with my classmates and teachers, and genuinely prepared me for the future, something I don't know that I would have had otherwise. I believe in this so much that I came back my last year of college to work on developing the engineering collaboration, and I loved that work so much, I applied for the math position. So three years later, here I am. Thomas Nelson is still continuing to allow me to learn and grow as a professional, and grow into my new role as school counselor at Thomas Nelson. In this role, I get to help students, just like I was helped in the very same classrooms and hallways. I know for a fact that some of our students will struggle greatly with this merger, and we will lose out on opportunities. And we're going to lose some great students that potentially could have gave back to their community, just like I am giving back to mine now. And I ask that you think about all the opportunities that you are squandering with this vote, and a safe space for our students is potentially gone. And the legacy of the students that came before them, myself included. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Courtney Higdon.
Well, I'm here to speak first in favor of the unification of the high schools, and secondly, to comment on some overall district concerns. I'd like to call to the attention of the school board and to the public. I strongly support the unification of the high school for a number of reasons. Academic performance at the schools doesn't meet expectations. Both the schools are performing well below the state average in reading and math. Academic program offerings are not equitable between the schools. Numerous academic and extracurricular programs are underperforming or non-existent, and there's just not the breadth of course offerings that our students deserve. Both facilities, I think we can all agree, are underutilized, operating at a mere 60% and 67% occupancy. And as a point of information, this year, we just have 24 more high school students in our district than we did in 2011. Additionally, keep in mind that most of our seniors are rarely in the school facility. The point is, logistically, it actually will work to put the students and their teachers together in this location. By making this decision to unify, whether that's tonight or in the future, you will by default be able to align district resources more efficiently and effectively into the classroom. Second, I want to call attention to the broader district-wide performance metrics of concern. First, finance. Our finances are not aligned with the priorities that they should be aligned with. From the Kentucky State Report Card, our spending per pupil was above state average on administrative and business support services, and below state average on instruction, instructional staff, and student support services. We need to trim the fat and redirect those resources. Our academic achievement, as we've learned before the holidays, is in the bottom 13% of school districts in Kentucky, 150 out of 172. Not only that, according to our own school data dashboard, one of our stated district goals to have third graders reading on level shows that we currently have only 44% of our third graders reading on level. That means six out of 10 of our third graders can't read on level, and this has been a goal for quite a time. This has to be corrected, and we cannot take years to do it. Finally, culture. And I appreciate all the wonderful experiences and stories that have been shared tonight, but the truth is that there are a lot of culture issues throughout the district, especially among staff. From the Kentucky School Report Card, our teacher turnover rate tells that story. As a district, we are at 29.5% compared to a state average of 20.4. We cannot successfully run a school district, turning over a quarter to a third of our staff every year, and that is true at both the high schools currently. I ask the board to consider these metrics, please.
Thank you. Okay, our next. You'll have to help me with this. Trevor.
Corfagan.
Who?
Corfagan.
Corfagan. Thank you. Come on down.
Okay, Boston Middle School.
Okay. Wait till your beep.
My name is Trevor Corfagan, and I am the sixth or eighth grade social studies teacher at Boston School. I felt the need to come speak today on behalf of my teachers and Boston, and most importantly, the students of Nelson County schools. We cannot stand by and allow our students to be negatively affected by a completely unplanned, politically-charged, and backhanded decision, such as combining Thomas Nelson and Nelson County into one high school. The fact that this decision is even being brought up today with zero planning is a slap in the face to the district's teachers and to the students who have been preparing for it. in the face to the district's teachers and to the students who have been preparing for a community campus at Thomas Nelson. The fact that there has been no mention of what to do with the middle schools by the creator of this combined high school plan, Diane Berry, is a major cause for concern. All the middle schools in Nelson County are struggling to provide the resources needed for students of all different learning abilities and backgrounds. We simply do not have enough space, resources, or teachers to fill all the needs of our students, and it will be soon unsustainable. This does not mean, however, that the teachers in these buildings are not doing their jobs as Ms. Berry may think. Each day when I walk into Boston, I see teachers running clubs, creating study groups, planning field trips, meeting with struggling students on their planning, and in some cases, spending more time at their school than with their own families. I do not speak only for Boston School, because I know each and every teacher in this district has done all of the above and more each day. If some of the board members would like to experience what teachers do each day, they are welcome to step inside a classroom to observe, or even as a substitute, which we desperately need. The community campus model may not solve every issue I listed above, but would be more beneficial to our students than what we currently provide with the resources at hand. Another area that Ms. Berry and other board members believe the combined high school will help to improve upon is athletics. I urge Ms. Berry and her supporters to look at the real issues with Nelson County schools, which should prioritize education over athletics. I was taught as a child that school always comes first, and I continue to instill this in my students today. Despite me being a college athlete and participating in sports my entire life, I still understand the importance of education over athletics, and will continue to hold that point of view. Please, Ms. Berry and anyone who supports this combined high school plan, take a second and think about what is best for the students of Nelson County, not what is best for a trophy cabinet, or what helps your campaign financier in Frankfurt. Thank you.
Very much. Our next speaker will be Carolyn James. Hold on.
My name's Carolyn, and tonight I'm going to be up here to talk on behalf of a Thomas Nelson student and the legacy that I've left behind. So at Thomas Nelson, we have things that we do every single year, and we have all of our traditions that they've come up and talked to you about already, just for that to all be washed away and merged into Nelson County and not just one high school. I'm worried about the fact that all the Thomas Nelson kids will just be pushed aside while it becomes the Nelson County mindset and get rid of everything that Thomas Nelson and Mr. Bradley has worked so hard to build over the last 10 years. Not only are we worried about academics, but you're also talking about bettering our athletics, but not everything about school is about athletics. But not only, Thomas Nelson has had a severe amount of athletic accomplishments over the past few years. In the past four years, our cross-country team has had two state championship winners. Our girls volleyball team won the 2019 volleyball districts as long as getting runner-up the following year, and on top of that, our esports team won state this very year. If we merge into Nelson County, Thomas Nelson, everything that we have done to create will be lost. All of our memories, like laying the brick, which I will get to lay this May, will be taken away from us just because you care more about the Nelson County way and get rid of what Mr. Bradley has done for all of us. All of my family has gone to Nelson County High School, but my parents thought that Thomas Nelson would be a better home for me just because of everything that they've done and how it's just a smaller class size and everything's different. When going to Thomas Nelson as a senior, you do not require to go to school every day, but just because I love Thomas Nelson so much, I go to school every day so I can make an impact with my teachers and focus on my education. And with smaller class sizes, going from an elementary school like Foster Heights, where my scores were average because of the class sizes being 30 kids a class, to a school like Boston with only 15 kids and 20 kids, my scores skyrocketed. And on top of that, with going to Thomas Nelson, I've had even better academic success as having an over a 4.0 GPA, getting into top schools in the state, and on top of that, plenty of academic scholarships just because of my ACT and my GPA. With going and merging the schools together, you're not going to have that one-on-one with the teacher, and you're just going to fall through the crack and just feel like you don't have to try and you don't have to push yourself. With teachers like Mr. Peake, he pushes me every day to make sure that I'm doing my best, I'm coming up with new ideas, and I have stuff for us to post on social media and all of that, just so everything that we do is different and innovative and changing from everything that we used to do at Nelson County. On top of that, and last comment, with all of that we have done at Thomas Nelson, just for it to be washed away, I just think...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Julian Mentor.
Hello, board members. My name is Julian Mentor, and I'm a senior at Thomas Nelson High School. I have become aware of the idea of merging the two high schools into one for everyone in the county. I would just like to say that as a student at Thomas Nelson, it's very upsetting to even think about this being an option. Thomas Nelson is a school that teaches hard work and discipline. It teaches the importance of taking care of yourself so that you can take care of other people. For four years, our class has worked hard to walk across that stage and graduate, not only to just graduate, but to be able to come back as alumni. I want to be an alumni that gets to come back to their school and watch football games and visit my old Karen Connect. I want to be able to see my old teachers and my past teammates, and if this merge happens, then none of this will be able to happen for any of us seniors. We have earned the right to keep our school. At Thomas Nelson, we are taught to leave a legacy. How will we be remembered? Our class has been working hard at school by creating memorable events such as prom, powder puff, homecoming, four-star night, and much, much more. We want the future generals to remember the class of 2023. We want to pave the way for future students, but how can we when everything we have built is going to be taken away? My classmates and I have put in countless hours of work in order to leave a legacy for the future generals to follow. Everything I have done for my classmates and my school has not just been for me and my legacy. A little less than a year ago, I made a promise to myself that I would love my school more than I ever have. I told myself that I would do everything in my power to put my school before myself, and the reason I did this was because there was someone who could not do that anymore. Mr. David Mudd loved Thomas Nelson more than anyone ever could, and I could never love my school the way that he did, but here I am, trying the absolute best that I can. I will always fight for Thomas Nelson, for myself, for my classmates, for my teachers, and for Mr. Mudd. In four months, I will get to lay my brick down on the sidewalk of Thomas Nelson, and I want to be able to come back to that brick year after year, because I have earned it. I have earned it, and so has every student at Thomas Nelson. Thomas Nelson has their own identity, and we have our rituals and our traditions, and we want to keep them because they're special to us. I believe that Thomas Nelson should remain Thomas Nelson for many years to come. Thank you.
Okay, our next person will be Michelle Hatfield.
My name is Michelle Hatfield. I am a sub for Nelson County Schools, and I have been subbing most of my time this year in Thomas Nelson and getting to know the students. Today, I was a sub for Ms. Mitchell, and a lot of the students were very upset about this today, and one of the students was actually almost in tears, and I won't share her name because I promised I wouldn't. She was upset with the passing of the torch that she wouldn't get to do, that ceremony, and she was upset that she wouldn't get to place her brick in the... They have a place where they place bricks, just the traditions. And I hope the board members think about these traditions, because most schools, these guys feel very strongly about that, the students. They try very hard. I am a mother of two students that are at Thomas Nelson, and they really want to do this. I mean, they're straight A students, they try hard. And I think, I'm very nervous up here, but I also feel like you guys need to put several options out there for the community to vote on, for the community to look at what all our options are, not just, "This is the option, this is what we're voting on." It's not okay. We need several options, because one option is not always what it should be. I mean, have we thought about the elementary and the middle schools? They're kind of crowded, maybe build another middle school, move the middle schooler, or, you know, there's lots of options out there. Don't just choose one option and say, "This is what we're voting on." Think about our teachers that will lose, because you can't have two directors of this, you can't have, you know, we're going to lose some great teachers. These students need these teachers. And, I mean, that's really all I wanted to say. You guys need more options on the table, and let us see them before you vote.
The next speaker will be Janine Mentor.
As a 22-year Nelson County teacher and a parent of three present and past Nelson County students, I am asking you to vote "no" on the merging of these two high schools. More research must be done on all of the options available to provide better equality for our middle schoolers. We have spent 20 months or so hearing both sides of the possible middle school merger, and now within a few days of being sworn in, a new board is voting on a completely different plan? How can such a huge decision that affects thousands of students, present and future, be made in a matter of days or weeks? How can we, as teachers, staff, and families, trust a board that is willing to make decisions that affect all of our children without the proper time, research, and discussion that it deserves? From a personal standpoint, I have one daughter that graduated from Thomas Nelson in 2021. She is going to graduate with her bachelor's degree in just three years, thanks to the opportunities she had with Ms. Kephart in the education pathway. I have another daughter who will graduate from Thomas Nelson this year, who has become a school leader through multiple opportunities that a smaller school has given her. She played volleyball for six years with Thomas Nelson, but if the high schools had been merged, she would not have had that privilege. What a different person she would be right now if she hadn't had the chance to participate in a sport that truly helped shape her into who she is today. Please don't sacrifice opportunity for wins. The bricklaying, the general serve, the seniors salute, the soft program, the house stewards, and all of the foundations that have built at that school are incredibly important and are not to be taken lightly. I know there are several Nelson County High School football parents and families in the room. I have followed the Full Nelson mantra over the last few years and have truly enjoyed seeing the growth of that program, even from the side of a Thomas Nelson parent. I know the coaches and players have put all they have into the legacy of Full Nelson. Now imagine that your board members told you that all of that Full Nelson was about to disappear with just one vote, without even hearing about other options. Everything you had put into creating that legacy for future students would just be taken away. This is no different than what could happen to Thomas Nelson's legacies. Two high schools allows for student and family choice. It allows for healthy competition. It allows for intimate class sizes. I ask you to please vote not to merge these high schools and continue the conversation that revolves around what is best for kids. What allows for the most opportunities for our middle schoolers and our high schoolers to be successful? This is the only thing that Nelson County should be about. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Olivia... I'm sorry, I can't read it. I'm sorry. Concha, okay. Come on down. Okay, one moment.
I'm a parent of two students at Thomas Nelson High School, a sophomore and a junior. Both of them are expecting to graduate as generals. These kids, right now, have already gone through the uncertainty and all the craziness with COVID, and just now, they have finally started to settle and really embrace their school spirit. They're starting to really get involved in their high school career, and I feel like now, with both of my kids getting ready to graduate in a couple of years, they're being told that that career is getting ready to change. The opportunities that both of them have been afforded at Thomas Nelson High School have been amazing. I can't say enough good things about the teachers and the administration, and I think the fact that there are so many students here willing to speak up says a lot about the school in general. They really care about their students. They make sure that they feel welcome in their school, and as a parent who can't always be there, it means a lot to know that they feel that family atmosphere at their school. Now, I don't claim to know the answers to the issues that the district was facing, but I agree with many other parents that we need to have the opportunity to look at all of the options, many options, more than just one option that's being decided within a week. I will say that I do think combining the schools is not the answer. Disrupting kids that have just now started to adjust to being back in school full-time is going to do more harm than help. Thank you.
Next speaker, Haley Victory. This will be a five-minute.
Hey there. My name is Haley Victory, and I live in the Cox's Creek area. I have led as the proud principal of Cox's Creek Elementary School for the last six years. I have two children in the Nelson County School District, a third grader and a first grader. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the school administrators of Cox's Creek Elementary. Statements were made at the most recent board meeting regarding the work ethic of teachers in our district. These statements were unprofessional, disrespectful, and false. Teachers across our nation are leaving the profession in droves because they feel overworked and unappreciated, and these statements insinuate that if teachers don't work three hours outside of their contracted day, they are undedicated. Comments like these contribute to teacher shortages that we are experiencing across our nation and in our district. In order to ensure that all positions are filled and in order to attract the best teachers like we have to the Nelson County schools, our staff needs to feel that our school board supports them. Comments like those that were made are dangerous because they paint an illusion for our current teachers and our future teachers that the Nelson County Board agrees with a negative and false narrative that is being shared across the nation about education as a profession. I feel incredibly fortunate to serve alongside the teachers at Cox's Creek Elementary School and the staff members in the Nelson County School District, because we know that their dedication exceeds well beyond the instructional hours of the school day. Instead of questioning the dedication of our staff, we need to look at them and we need to tell them that we see them. We see you opening car doors in the rain and the snow for students before your workday begins. We see you sponsoring clubs and teams so that kids can have opportunities that they're passionate about. We know that this is done after school and on the weekends. We see you attending events like the Beta Convention where you are away from your own families so that students across our community can showcase their gifts and have an opportunity to lead and to shine. We see you at students' birthday parties, at ballgames, at recitals because you love our kids and you are always there for them. We see you responding to texts and emails from parents outside of the school day and on weekends. We see you grading and lesson planning at night, long after you put your own children to bed. We see you. Comments were also made regarding the lack of reading instruction that is taking place in our schools. I truly mean it when I say that you are all invited to Cox's Creek at any time. Please come and see our teachers in action as they teach small group reading to students at a wide variety of levels. Please come and observe rise. These incredible teachers are closing gaps in reading that will no doubt make an impact on these children for a lifetime. Come and join in a novel study where you can be in a rich discussion with our intermediate students. I am so proud of the work we do around reading at Cox's Creek, and I want you to see it. Please come. Although a large part of my desire to speak this evening was prompted by the need to support our teachers, I feel that I cannot end tonight without sharing my thoughts regarding the facility planning process. As a community, we spent the last 20 months discussing the positives and negatives of each facility option in order to provide the most opportunities for our students. As a member of the LPC, I feel that my own integrity was questioned, as well as the integrity of other LPC members when it came to the efficacy of the process. The LPC was presented with transportation data, enrollment numbers, planning and zoning information, and examples of opportunities available to middle and high school students across our state. In a vote of 17-3, the local planning committee determined that the community campus would provide the most opportunities for our students. Sadly, it seems that some were so close-minded about the community campus model from the beginning that evidence that supported this plan was never seen through open eyes. Over the last week, there's been a great deal of discussion around the idea of merging one high school and one middle school, but I've seen very little evidence provided by the school board as to why it is the best plan for our community. I'm asking you to slow down and take a breath. Several of you have been board members for one week. If we merge into one middle and one high-
Thank you very much. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you, please come to Cox's Creek.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Leanne Bagley. Okay, here she comes.
My name is Leanne Bagby, and I am a parent and a taxpayer. I'm the parent of an alumnus, a Thomas Nelson alumnus, class of 2020, and I have a seventh grader who's about to enter consideration for which high school he wants to go to. And I can tell you, he wants to be a general, just like his brother before him. And so, the reason that I'm here is because what I really want to say is that while it's tempting to squawk about testsors and it's tempting to talk about all of these other things, the reality is that education goes beyond that. As a vice president of Human Resources, I see people into the workforce every day with stellar pedigree, stellar education, and simply are not able to function. When you look when you look at the graduates of Thomas Nelson, they bring community, they bring passion, and they bring a commitment that you don't see all the time. I don't see them all the time in the workforce now. And I find it both insulting and condescending to suggest that somehow merging these two schools together is somehow going to be the fix. I don't know what the fix is. I don't. But I can tell you, look around. I don't think this group believes that this is the right course of action. I don't believe it's the right course of action. And as a parent, I want to talk a little bit about choice. Everyone has a choice for what they believe is right. But make no mistake, if you push forward with this, and we don't have the proper discourse, and we're not looking at multiple options, my choice will be to remove my child from your school district. And I won't hesitate to do it. And I know I'm not the only one who feels that way. I find the lack of transparency bothersome, and I am particularly disturbed that we're not looking at other options, or if we are, they're not being widely discussed. So I challenge you, as board members, if this is really the best option you have, if this is the best you can do for us, then you might want to ask whether you have the bandwidth to serve this community on the Board of Education. Thank you.
Our next speaker. Our next speaker is Jane Butler.
Hi, I'm Javon Butler, and I'm a sophomore at Thomas Nelson High School. Whenever I was first told that we could possibly be merging schools, I was overly shocked because without Thomas Nelson, I could not have become the person I am now. I have always been incredibly, incredibly bad at sports and math and anything involving, anything extracurricular or school. And I thought, growing up, I was going to have to grow up with it, live with it, have to build around it. But going into Thomas Nelson, I met people who have found ways for me to fix things like that or help me. For example, I would like to thank Ms. Blanton. She has showed me the ends-on-ends on ways she can help me, on how people can get help for math and how they can learn and not get, stay stuck at one spot in life and how they can move forward. And I'd like to thank her for waking up early and taking extra hours to help me and to help me pass and get all As. And I'd also like to thank Darren Morris for helping me with volleyball and helping me get more advanced at it. And I also would like to mention the sports teams and how big of a community that Thomas Nelson has built and how connected everyone is there. For me, I came in feeling like I was not going to be able to connect with the people around me, but playing for Thomas Nelson has showed how connected everyone is and how big, how big of a part the people in that building play. And I really hope that we can continue to play, they can continue to play that big of a part, and they continue to help all the students around them so we can all get all As like I have or get all the opportunities that I have, like applying for GSA or sorry, just applying for big things, big things that can get you into college. And I really, really appreciate it. And I also like how we talk a lot about legacy and how we want to build a legacy and how Thomas Nelson uses our traditions, like laying the brick down, to continue our legacy and help us realize that we will be remembered. And our legacy is not just, we're not just saying it's a legacy. Our legacy actually stays. And we're actually going to be remembered here. And the part that we played here is not just here to be forgotten. There's actual meaning to it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Becky McFarland.
Hi, my name is Becky McFarland. My son is new to Thomas Nelson High School. He's a hybrid student. We came from Jefferson County Public Schools. There are too many students at JCPS per classroom and per school. The school my son was attended was one of the schools that many parents would have loved to have their student attend. But I was never in that building when I did not witness fights, bullying, bad language, et cetera. JCPS spends their money on additional security guards and security necklaces for their teacher instead of spending it on more teachers, better programs, and reduced class size. Nelson County and Thomas Nelson High School has that right now. Our son is a positive kid, yet we did not know how unhappy he was at JCPS until we came to Thomas Nelson and saw how happy he is now. My son has special needs, but he feels like he belongs at Thomas Nelson thanks to people like Mr. Fletcher and the other students at Thomas Nelson High School. Changing course in the middle of high school years is difficult for all students, but especially for students with special needs who have a harder time adjusting to change. Student-teacher ratios are important because it allows teachers more time to devote to individual students. Thomas Nelson offers those smaller class sizes and more individual attention and flexibility. Smaller groups means less conflict, less noise, less distractions. It means the faculty has a capacity to connect with each student in a way that's not possible in a large school. It also offers students opportunities to grow as diverse learners. Leadership skills that may not be possible in larger schools because of increased competition for time and resources. Thomas allows students to explore their interests who engage with the community, which values their potential as future teachers, business leaders, and professional communities. It offers an excellent academic atmosphere that allows students to make and learn their mistakes without fear of being lost in the shuffle. While they don't have unlimited resources, they are nimble enough to allocate those resources in the most appropriate manner for the students. Combining rival campuses will cause conflicts between the students. Ultimately, the students at Thomas Nelson are happy, content. They feel safe and they feel heard, which is a very unique situation. And I do not think that you should underestimate that. We have received nothing but love and support since we joined Thomas Nelson High School. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alec Welch.
So, my name is Alex Welch. I'm a current junior here at Thomas Nelson High School. And Thomas Nelson has really shown me what it can change me just with classes, with Thomas Nelson, with teachers just like Mr. Fletcher, Mr. Harrison, Ms. Robertson, all the engineering collab. They've taught me discipline, leadership, all sorts of stuff. And me hearing about the combination possibly happening. It really shocked me, it really did. And hearing that it was a whole athletics thing, that's also a really big shocker. Me coming in as a, I'm so involved at the school with track, band, et cetera. I would rather be in a worse team with my friends than be with a slightly better team and not have a good time. And track for me has really been a personal goal for me as I've been wanting to beat our school's long-term record. I've been working at that since freshman year. And knowing that maybe I can't beat that record is really hurtful. And that's just really not a, it's a really sad thing for me because I've worked three years for it now. And also, I think this so this really affects teachers' jobs mainly and the class of 2024, the juniors. Because this is going to give teachers like Mr. Fletcher or any teacher here at Thomas Nelson High School, they're not going to have a job. They're going to have to find a new job because they're combining schools and they can't have all those teachers in one school. There's not enough classrooms, there's not enough room for even them to be able to teach. And all the, like, leader awards, build the brick, all of the Thomas Nelson culture that we have built here, they'll all be gone. You know, we want kids to really come to school and be excited for it. And to have a lot of Thomas Nelson kids become here and say, oh, your senior year is not going to be at your school. All of us have dreamed about senior year since we were in first, second, third grade. We want it to come to school, and we want our kids to want to come to school. And one thing is just about our, like, leatherman jackets. We have spent a lot of money on these jackets. And say we switch, that all means nothing. And we would all have to buy, like, all new clothes because we would have to follow their, just, their and just, there's a hallway in Thomas Nelson downstairs, and that hallway has a bunch of pictures of our athletics, of our everything. And just the sheer amount of emotion that comes from those pictures, like our basketball team, all the people that scored, like, a thousand-plus points in their career, all their memories would be gone. And just, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michelle Osborne. Is she coming? Michelle? Okay. Our next speaker is Diane Berry.
So I am here as a concerned citizen and a former member of the Nelson County Board of Education. When I had heard that there was a potential vote tonight that would consist of merging the two high schools over to Nelson County High School, I knew in an instant that this had to have Diane Berry's name written all over it. And I feel confident that this is related to sports. The reason why I think that is because Diane and I have had several conversations over the seven years I served on the board about how opening Thomas Nelson had negatively impacted the Nelson County sports program, and it did. And both of us were very passionate about that. So my comments are essentially directed towards you. I would like to believe that sports is not the only driving reason for merging the two high schools, but I'm doubtful. And if this is where your head is right now, how completely irresponsible are you? And how shallow you are in thinking that merging the high schools is somehow going to win a state championship or hoisting the trophy, as you were quoted as saying. And this is as a 6A school, mind you, because that's the class Nelson County would move to under this ridiculous idea. So let's talk just football for a minute. The last time Nelson County was a 6A football team was when my boys were playing, their sophomore year. And they were playing varsity. And they won one game the whole year. And by default, because there were only four 6A teams in their division, they went to the first round of the state playoffs, and they were drilled by Saint X. Drilled, 77 to 13. My point is, and I mean no disrespect to the Thomas Nelson, Nelson County players and coaches, but the reality is, the chances of winning a 6A state championship in this state is slim at best. And for sports to be a reason to merge the two schools is completely asinine. Opening Thomas Nelson was a bad idea in its conception, and that was due to blindly thinking that the district would grow on that side of the county to warrant it. Basically, they put the cart before the horse. But fast forward 10 years, look at what Thomas Nelson has done and look at what they have built. Why on earth would you even consider taking that away from those kids just to build a sports program? It's selfish. And I say in my HR world, there is no business need to do that because this doesn't fix the ultimate problem, and that is in the middle schools. You voted to approve the schematic drawings of both the Thomas Nelson and Nelson County community campus, so I struggle to understand what has changed. And the answer is nothing. You just have two new board members that are against- You just have two new board members that are against the community campus model and you're trying to capitalize on that. You have been heard shouting, "Three-two vote, three-two vote." Why would you even do that if this was not on your agenda? If the community campus model is off the table, you can still redistrict the middle schools to provide better feeder patterns and make it more equitable for the families as they continue to move into the county, and they will.
Thank you. Okay. Our next section is our consent agenda. Okay, sorry, I didn't see it. I didn't see it. Don't get excited, people, please. It wasn't on the sheet on this, it was on the back, okay? Sorry. Okay. Our next speaker is Mr. Joseph Larry Mattingly.
This old sign has been with me for 20 months. When I first heard the news of merging the middle schools, I said, "Oh, my." First thought, "Oh, no." Second thought was, "We can't allow this. We don't want our kids on them school buses all that many hours." And it's a tough road for a young kid to get on that bus and go that far. So what I want to say to everyone tonight, I'm for everyone in this room. I'm for every person in this room. And I think that we're going to have to regroup and rethink about all that's gone down in 20 months. We have fought hard, the little middle schools, and we didn't have crowds like this. But boy, when they talk about merging the two schools, I am proud of all of y'all being here tonight. And I hope that we can get the same support from you all, that yes, Thomas Nelson's a great school, Nelson County High School's a great school. And we thank our schools and our districts. New Haven is where I'm from, and I did not introduce myself, I apologize. But, and Boston's a great community and Bloomfield is too. And we have been discussing this for 20, about 20 months, to try to save our schools because we love our school over at New Haven too. And we want to keep a full school over there, first through eighth. And of course, they separated the middle school from the fifth grade, and then Bloomfield's got two different buildings. But I think New Haven's still got the one, and they share in Boston is still one, and middle school shares it. But the merger has really woke up Nelson County, hasn't it? Oh, yes. Maybe it's time. You know, when I raised my two kids, we were busy making a living, and we don't always have time to maybe do the right thing and spend more time with them at schools and all. But that's the way life is too. And so, we didn't have a crowd like this for the middle school savings. But like I said, we sure do tonight. And now y'all know the feeling that we have. Hope the school board does the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next guest will be Marion Blanton. Here she comes.
Hello, my name is Marion Blanton. I'm currently a sophomore enrolled at Thomas Nelson High School. First off, I apologize if I talk really fast because I'm kind of nervous. But one thing I really want to talk about is how can you guys be so focused on our education and not worry about our health and our safety first? That's one thing I'm really worried about because over, if you could... The culture over at Thomas Nelson Nelson County is completely different. Merging two different cultures that was divided by a rivalry that caused by the Pride Bowl and another sport, how are you going to combine that two together and create a wildfire that cannot be extinguished? I mean, combining these two schools can create a huge mess. And I'm worried about other safety and not other than mine. I'm worried about people's safety that are going to be future generals or future Cardinals. Sorry. But combining these two schools, because people have grown to hate each other over these sports. People have grown to hate each other because of our differences. And one thing that really needs to be addressed is our safety and our health, not because of some test scores or some education. What needs to be addressed is just us as students. Like, we have to have a voice in this too, and we currently are showing that today. But I feel like some people don't have a say in this. If you're so worried about our test scores, I feel like people who really have a say are the students who are enrolled in these schools, students who know what it's like to be there every single day. But our safety is more important than education, and that really needs to be known. I don't want to combine the schools. I love it at Thomas Nelson. I don't want to be... I don't want to be forced to go to another school over my own will. And I really hope you guys take that into consideration, considering the fact that not everybody will have one-on-one time with teachers. Not everyone will have relationships with coaches or teachers. Like, I have amazing relationships with the football team coaches. Like, I love them and I love my teachers, but I'm afraid all that's going to be lost when you merge the schools. How are you going to mess up relationships and mess up everything that has been already created just because you want to merge a school over statistics and over test scores when really that shouldn't be even the matter at this point? What really needs to matter is our health and our safety. What needs to matter is us, not our academics. We come first.
Okay, our next speaker will be Mackenzie Floyd. Did I say that right?
Okay, good. I would first like to start off by saying with all the speakers we've had, we have had a single person in support of the mergers. I'm Mackenzie Floyd, and I'm a current sophomore at Thomas Nelson. I can confidently say that my teachers care about me, my thoughts, my feelings, and my education. And in their care for me, they have taught me to advocate for myself and my students. So that is what I'm doing here tonight in front of you, the education board, and you, the community. I am continuously told in school and in our community, the importance of culture is something that each individual school has. The merging of these schools will not only damage the ones we have at these high schools, but every single middle school and elementary, because we have theater schools that go into these high schools. One of the things that you say the merging for is for the betterment of the students, but how can that be when overall the Nelson County High School can only hold 14, not even 14, 13,000 students? And in turn of the mergers, there will be 14, nearly 1,500 students in that building. And that building itself is running down. Their science labs don't even have running hot water. And you want this to happen in August? That's going to take longer for the building to be repaired than it will for a single summer break. So as a student myself, I can go into my community and talk to other students, and I can confidently say that if any very few students want this merger to happen. And I remind you, the board, you are here electively, and you're here to represent the community and the students. And right now, you are not doing so, and if you are, you're representing a very small amount. I can say... And then, also, might I mention that this was in place with not even three weeks of notice for us? It was no solid plan intact. How are we going to support a decision with no plan, no action, no plan of action, nothing from them showing that this is what they're going to do and carry it out correctly? I cannot say with certainty that the students of today and tomorrow will feel the same amount of care from their community if this were to go through today. Might I say by myself, I am an out-of-county student. I am proud from Harding County. I am proud to be a Nelson County student at Thomas Nelson. But if this merger goes through, I can guarantee you that this will not, I will not be here next year. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Laura Cornish. Laura Cornish.
Laura Cornish, Thomas Nelson High School, 30 years. 30 years that I have driven an hour both ways to teach in this school district. My first 20 years were at Nelson County High School. My last 10 have been at Thomas Nelson. And I was one of the ones that didn't want to go. But trust me when I tell you, thank God for unanswered prayers was the best thing that ever happened to me. And let me tell you why and what the difference between having taught 20 years at Nelson County High School and 10 at Thomas Nelson. When you were at Nelson County High School, and I pride myself at being a good teacher, I think, and I prided myself in knowing some of those students. But let me tell you, if they didn't want to be known, they were not going to be known. Some of those kids were absolutely, completely invisible. Six periods a day, 185 days, four years. And they could have walked across that stage, and I would have been, "I've never seen that child before." Completely and totally invisible. That's the difference between that and Nelson County, Thomas Nelson, sorry. You cannot walk through the hall and not be seen. You can't walk into a classroom and not get greeted with a handshake that's requiring you to look somebody in the eye, or just a hello. You get called by name. You get to feel as if you belong and you are important. You can't hide. You can't come to Care Connect for four years and hide. You are no longer invisible. And it doesn't matter what opportunities that either one of these schools offer. If you're invisible, you're not going to take anybody up on one single opportunity. Our kids get that chance. And let me tell you a little bit about Care Connect real fast. When I can text alumni and say so-and-so's in trouble and they need some help, and they do it, that's what it's about.
Thank you. Okay. Our next speaker will be Tyler Chevalier. Did I say it right?
My name is Tyler Chevalier, and I'm here as a Thomas Nelson student to speak against the merging of Thomas Nelson and Nelson County High Schools. In eighth grade, when I was making the decision on which school I was going to attend between Bethlehem and Thomas Nelson, it was very difficult for me. The pull to Bethlehem was that all of my friends at the time were going there. But Thomas Nelson was pulling me because of the reputation and culture it has built. My older brother had already been enrolled for two years and told me about how much he liked how the school made him feel and how he was involved. His friends were coming over more and more often, and even with the age gap, they included me and began to also be my friends, which showed me how truly special Thomas Nelson is for a group of people that were going into their junior year of high school to be able to be friends with an eighth grader that might not even be going to their school. Eventually, I made the decision to come to Thomas Nelson, and coming here has been worth every decision, every second of that decision. Shortly after I enrolled, soccer conditioning had started, where I knew very few people, but I was immediately included by the entire team. Through the season, I became close with everybody, and we are still close to this day. I believe this is an advantage of having a smaller school because I can be close with the people from my grade and without, and that are not, and see them throughout the year. None of this culture would be alive without the amazing teachers we have. And one of the best examples I can think of is Ms. Robertson. Ms. Robertson is probably the smartest, most hard-working person I have ever met, and I'm lucky to have her as my AP Environmental Science teacher. This year, she is both a teacher and a backpack leader in the school, which are both very difficult for a person who only does one of those jobs and do them well. But she, on the other hand, manages to do both. It was relatively recently that she was hired at Thomas Nelson from her previous teaching job at Martin County High, which for those of you who do not know, is three and a half hours away. She met our science teacher at an AP Science conference and worked with her as a lab partner for the weekend of the conference. While working with our science teacher, it let her know that Thomas Nelson is where she wants to be. Because of the attitude, is where she wants to teach because of the attitude and values toward teaching that that science teacher had showed that weekend. She moved her and her family three and a half hours in 2019 so that she could be a part of the culture she encountered with that one teacher. Thomas Nelson still amazes her to this day because of the high accountability, administrative support, and the fact that she has heard throughout the school. If the merge goes through, it will risk losing students and teachers.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Thomas Chevalier.
My name is Thomas Chevalier, but I'm here to advocate for my father, who unfortunately could not attend this meeting, to the Nelson County School Board. I am unable to attend this board meeting, but felt it was important to formally voice my concerns of the potential merger of Nelson County and Thomas Nelson. my concerns of the potential merger of Nelson County and Thomas Nelson. It is the responsibility of the school board to determine the most efficient way to manage resources that provide the best education possible to the children of Nelson County. If that means consolidating schools, I'll support that decision, but only if it includes a defined execution plan, a projection of the final cost and benefits, and a full understanding of the staffing needs and a proposal for the vacated buildings. There are some basic questions that need to be answered before proceeding to ensure the smooth transition. Who has been identified as a project leader and coordinator? What is the administration plan? How many teachers are needed and what is the plan to assign them? Are there repairs and renovations needed at Nelson County High School to handle the additional students? Is there sufficient parking at Nelson County High School? What is the budget for this transition? What is the impact to transportation, food, and maintenance services? What is the process for selecting sponsors and coaches for clubs and athletics at the combined school? The idea being discussed is far from being well-defined and not something we should figure out how to do on the fly after it is approved. Don't change the wheels on a proverbial moving bus. Many of our students are already behind in playing catch-up in the pandemic. We owe it to them to not hastily make a decision, fumble the execution, and set them further behind. During the fall election, the newest board members specifically identified the turnover and retention as top priority. Most recent posts made on Ms. Deaton's Facebook campaign page on November 7th states, "We do not need to keep a system in which educators feel so unsupported they leave our district after decades of service in search of better, excuse me, better opportunities in neighboring districts." Ask the school board, without a defined execution plan for resource, without a defined execution plan for resource staffing, what do you think educators educators will do that are potentially affected by this decision? Max Exodus. If you leave them with any level of uncertainty, they will exit this district at an even faster rate than we currently have. In today's market and statewide teacher shortage, this is a very, very likely reality. In closing, I request the school board to further vote on the consolidation until detailed proposal can be drafted and socialized within the community. Please take time to make a well-defined plan and do not rush this vote based on personal agendas. Thank you. Eric Chevalier.
Next speaker will be Rihanna Joplin. A group?
Yeah.
What group? A group of students? Okay.
My name is Rihanna Joplin and I will be speaking on behalf of a group of Thomas Nelson students that are not able to be here today.
Fix that so you can be heard, please. Adjust it. There you go.
Being a senior, I have been a student at Thomas Nelson for four years. Four years that have truly been an amazing experience, one that is exclusive to Thomas Nelson. Experience is the number one thing that I wanted from high school when I first came to Thomas Nelson. They teach the welcoming aspect before you even arrive. Students being placed into houses and Care and Connects that they are most compatible with. In the seventh grade, I started playing sports for Thomas Nelson, scared of the high school stu-, high schools that I would be joining. But they were so welcoming. I felt that I truly fit in. The memories I have made in sports are unforgettable. I am proud to be part of TNHS Athletics. I am a very competitive person and this school has created a safe environment for me to express that characteristic, including the rivalry with Nelson County. This so-called rivalry adds to the competitive culture at the games for Thomas Nelson. One of the many memories I have at this school is attending football games, basketball games, softball games, et cetera. The Friday Night Lights is the best part of the year, especially the game against Nelson County or the Pride Bowl. The Pride Bowl has become a tradition and it is being taken away as a result of the merge. Thomas Nelson is big on tradition. However, this is not only a tradition for Nelson, for Thomas Nelson, but also for Nelson Thomas Nelson has taught me so much within the four years I have been here. I have learned to become a strong young individual, to voice my opinion and stay strong in what I believe in. I have learned to become a leader. Leader values are the foundation of the culture that Thomas Nelson is built on. The leadership values are learn and grow, energize our community, achieve the impossible, discipline equals freedom, engage in meaningful conversations, and responsibility begins with us. These values are in all of the teachers at Thomas Nelson High School. That is why we refer to them as leaders. Not only will this merger affect students, but it will also affect them. All the leaders at Thomas Nelson High School care for their students' success. In my experience, there are so many I can turn to in my times of need. My old softball coach that works at Thomas Nelson is one of them. She has affected my high school experience as well as given me life lessons. She is one of the best people I have ever met. She has not only encouraged me to do well in school, but also succeed in the future. With her many words of wisdom, whether they are from previous softball sessions, the classroom, or personal experience, or professional experiences, she has influenced the person I am today. Something she said that will truly stick with me is "control the controllables." This quote has helped me in so many ways and I know that in the future, I will have a mindset to control my emotions, my environment, and my possibilities. You may think the act of reverting to one high school will not affect the seniors leaving this 2022-2023 school year, but it will. The alumni have always been welcomed back to Thomas Nelson for many things, Care and Connect being one. The bonds that have been made throughout the different grades are sentimental, not only for me, but for everyone. I have loved hearing what past students have had to say and soon I will be an alumni at TNHS and it would be an honor to be invited back to do the same and share what I have learned. However, the merge would be taking this away, not only from me, but from future graduating classes. Overall, the merge of Thomas Nelson and Nelson County would take away so many impactful traditions, experiences, and opportunities for students to grow. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Krista Gillian. Oh, she had to leave? Oh, okay. I'm sorry, she couldn't make it. The next speaker is Sarah Rogers.
Hey, I'm actually reading this from an eighth grader at New Haven School. Hi, my name is Ella Rose. I'm an eighth grader at New Haven School. I moved here about two years ago and I have loved every minute of this district. I have made so many amazing friends here and already have made so many good memories. I love all my teachers, my classes, my school, and my sports teams. I will be attending Thomas Nelson High School next year, I hope. First of all, this idea was proposed last week and we already want to have a vote a week later? That's insane. Every idea should be well-thought-out and well-planned for months at least, especially a big change like this. We separated these schools for a reason. And think about whoever created Thomas Nelson and all the hard work that's gone into that school. Trust me, it wasn't for this. If these two schools merge, the classes, I believe, will be so big and it won't serve our students as the best. Of course, my grades are first, but what happens to sports? Think about all those kids that will not get to play. Sports are everything to me. They take up every week of my life and I look forward to playing, playing them for as long as I can. Okay, let me go here. What happens, what happens to that? Kids that put in a ton of hard work, those kinds of things are left as a legacy. They want to remember forever and maybe even show their kids. Speaking of legacies, my uncle, David Mudd, he passed away a year ago in May. Many of you know him. He was the absolute sweetest man in this world. He helped everyone he saw. He helped all the seniors at Thomas Nelson. He got jobs. He gave, and he gave them hope for a future. He never said a negative word about anyone or anything. He was the best. He put everything he had into that school and those students. And he left a legacy that nobody will ever forget. His visitation was even at that school and all the students were there. It actually makes me so sick to my stomach to think about how much this would break his heart. Please, please, do not let this happen. Do not take our high school away.
The next speaker is Matt Hoynes. There you go.
Like, that's all I know to do when that goes off is like start my watch and run, which is kind of what I'd rather do right now. But here I am talking to all of y'all. I'm coming, you guys, really as somebody that fills multiple roles in this district. I am a, I'm a teacher, I'm a coach, I'm a proud parent of a recent graduate, but really has been driving me to get up here and say something is that I am a parent of a five-year-old and seven-year-old, both attending Cox Creek. And it just, you know, the, all of those roles combined give me, I think, a lot of different, unique perspectives. So narrowing it down to a three-minute talk was pretty, pretty dicey, but I'll do my best. So one thing I just, you know, I really want to reiterate is that I appreciate what you all do. Serving leadership is, you know, if you, if you thought it was going to be fun, sorry. You know, it's obviously now you know it's not. But it, but I know you knew that going in and you're doing it for our kids. And in my heart of hearts, I believe you're doing it for my kids too and want the absolute best for them. So I hope you guys are just willing to kind of keep your ears open and constantly be, be looking forward and seeking those right answers. So a couple of the different things that I'd like to mention, just within the different roles that I fill, the out-of-district kids that I coach. I mentioned this to Ms. Deaton, and I wanted to say thank you all for coming to school the other day. Amanda and Mr. Norman both came and visited school and Ms. Deaton sat down with us for a really long time. Mr. Norman walked around and visited classes and I think had a, a pretty fulfilling visit. But I have a Riku Sugui from Bardstown, Daniel Filiatru from Washington County, Bailey Houghton from Bullet County, Will DeWitt, Districted Nelson, and Jacob Jimenez to Nelson. That's just my small team. All of those kids choose Thomas Nelson. And they don't choose me or just choose to run there, but they choose Thomas Nelson because of what it is. So if it is about raising trophies, and I'm going to get into all, spend all of my three minutes bragging on our accolades, but we've won 10 state titles individually and track them cross-country. So it's, it might, it might not be the right sports, but you know, it's, it's one that I think is pretty cool. So I do want to mention cohort size. I went to a school in Cincinnati and graduated with about 600 to 620 kids and I was that person that sat there in graduation and 15 to 20 people would walk across the stage and I would not know any of them. And then I would know one. And then it would be about 15 or 20 more and then I would know another one. And I've, I've been through that. And luckily, I did okay in that situation, but it's just really not fantastic for anybody. So I'm going to skip over the occupancy thing. And you know, occupancy is like every square inch you can fit a kid in a building. So like throwing out the occupancy per building numbers is really pretty skewed. That's not great ammunition. Ms. Deaton mentioned to us a couple of different times that elections have consequences and she said it three times in our meeting. And I just want to mention there, and they did win overwhelmingly on the platform they ran on. She had 2,005 people vote, David had 1,300, we have 4,000 students. Vast amount.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jessica Sokolski. Jessica, Principal Nelson? There you go.
My name is Jessica Sokolski. I'm here tonight as a parent.
Wait, Jessica, hold on.
I get excited, Diane. I'm here tonight as a parent of three children. Two students who attend Cox's Creek Elementary and one who attends Bloomfield Middle School and I'm excited to say will be attending Nelson County High School with me next year. I'm also here as a community member and I'm here as the principal of Nelson County High School. I want to start by saying thank you to the board members who returned my messages and came to visit our building. The acknowledgement that more discussions and working together is pivotal in making an informed decision about the future of Nelson County schools is much appreciated. I have been in education for 17 years with over half of those here in Nelson County. I have been fortunate to have a unique perspective of our school district. I have worked as a counselor at Bloomfield Middle School, Thomas Nelson, the Academy, and OKH. I spent two years at the district level as DPP where I was able to collaborate with every school in the district and this year I have the honor of leading Nelson County High School. I say all of this so you can understand the vast experience I have had in our schools that shapes the way I see and feel about the future of our students. I know that students thrive and succeed in an environment where they feel cared for, where they are able to make meaningful relationships and feel part of a school community, something that is happening in both of our high schools. We have identities that define the stories. We have identities that define the stories that each of our students so uniquely get to tell. Those identities create different opportunities for growth in two different buildings. TNHS's principal, Kurt Merrifield, and I are both proud that our students are able to have that. We want both buildings to be successful and we continue to work together to move us forward and improve on areas that need improving. Wes and his team have been nothing short of supportive this year in listening to our needs and putting plans into motion such as creating district teams that will connect content leaders to align curriculum. I personally have worked with Wes during my entire time here in Nelson County and while we have had some heated conversations, in the end, I know his leadership and heart are in the right place. Lastly, I know our teachers across the district thrive and succeed when in an environment where they are treated as the professionals that they are. For any plan to be successful, we must listen to them because without them, none of this will work. I am honored to work with the best in the state, from the ones that take care of my own babies to those that haven't given up and have continued spending countless hours making sure where you're moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next, our next speaker is Kurt Merrifield. I'm sorry, Merrifield.
I'm also speaking for a group of legacy leaders that aren't able to be here today. Hello, everyone. My name's Kurt Merrifield. I've spent nine years at Thomas Nelson High School as a science teacher, an assistant principal, and I'm lucky enough to work with this group of people right now as their principal. I'm here today to talk about relationships because everything that's being discussed today boils down to just that, relationships. Look around this room right now. Listen to the stories of our staff, our parents, our students. That cannot be boiled down to a single data point or a palette of primary and secondary colors. When we think about walking through the hallways, our teachers, Ms. Sokolski and myself, we are able to make a connection with every single one of those students. In the high schools, we're able to know the names, know the backstories, and know the struggles of almost every single student in our building. The size of the high schools gives our leaders and our teachers the capacity to be the best that they can be because they have an awareness, because they have an awareness of what goes on in our students' lives, not just in the eight hours we have them or the 10 to 12 if you're working extracurriculars or coaching. eight hours we have them, or the ten to twelve, if you're working extracurriculars or coaching, but what goes on outside of our building as well. We have the best teachers in the state. We need to empower those teachers. And as population sizes increase, we diminish their capacity to form deep connections with our students. And that is doing them wrong, and that is a disservice to them. When we talk about relationships, there was a deep discussion with the local planning committee. As Ms. Victory said, "If you look in just this room, Ms. Bowling, Ms. Victory, myself, Ms. Di, names like Ms. Amshoff, Ms. Preer, Ms. Pinkston..." Those leaders and teachers, community members and parents, were all part of these conversations. To dismiss the work that went into those discussions, to dismiss what was brought forward by those people that care for your children every single day is also a disservice, and it's disingenuous. There have been a lot of conversations about money. A lot of conversations. It is important to have an audit on the effective use of money and to eliminate wa, waste. But I've yet to hear one conversation about downstream effects that come with isolation, that come with not having a connection. When students get lost in the shuffle, when students become just another number, when students are painted again as a color, blue, orange, whatever palette you choose, whatever KDE decides to have that year, that is not what we need to focus on. When we think about waste, we are not thinking about the detrimental impacts and implications that have to our youth. When we think about isolation, when we think about disconnect, the costs of our students, their health and their mental well-being, is significantly more than any upfront cost of a building. And I wanna speak, I think I speak for Ms. Sikolski and myself, when I say that our schools both have amazing gifts and amazing challenges, both in front of us. We have amazing leaders in those buildings, and yes, we have different identities. Whether students, after a four-year journey, are taking flight or writing their future story, we are ensuring that they have the choice to find an identity and to find purpose. We ensure that parents have the ability to decide what is best and most beneficial for their student, and it also acknowledges that our students are not one size fits all. This also applies... This also applies to our leaders. We are able to recruit, whether it be full Nelson or being a purple cow, that speaks to different people, and that is an asset. The different cultures in our buildings is an asset to our district. And finally, I wanna speak to Mr. Bradley's leadership. During his hiring process, I said I did not want a leader that just was there to check boxes. I wanted someone that would move our county forward, that would push me as a leader, and put our students first. We have that with our current superintendent, with Wes's leadership, and we should appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next, uh, speaker will be Manny Mae Pinkston. She's left? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, next speaker will be Tiffany Clark.
Sorry, I gotta take that way down. And I will not be able to follow those two. I can promise you that. Hello, I am Tiffany Clark. I am currently the principal at the New Haven School. I could articulate all of the things that the principals that have gone before me have talked about, how we are blessed to have the teachers who give their time every single day to our kids, who are upholding expectations that educators have not had or seen in the past. Um, I could discuss the LPC process as being a part of that as well. But here today, and I've tried to figure out which role I wanna discuss. So I'm a mom of three. I have all three of my girls with me at the New Haven School. I do not live in Nelson County, however, I was born in Nelson County. I went to Cox's Creek, Bloomfield Middle School, and Nelson County High School. So again, this community is my community. With that being said, I chose to bring my three girls to Nelson County schools because of Mr. Bradley's leadership. His vision for what we will be is what I want my girls to be part of. Now, over the last twenty months, there have been additional opportunities that have arisen for middle school. So as a mom, I want my girls to have the same opportunities as every other middle school across the district. That also includes giving them access to high school courses and pathways that I have no idea that they might take, and they're very different, so who knows what those might be? On the other side, let's see how much time I have. I also represent a population in my building who do not feel confident coming up and speaking at the mic. They do not feel comfortable articulating the things that they want for their children in a group of people. However, when asked, they will speak with you individually. They might not know how to articulate it, as well as some of the people that have been before me, but I assure you, they want the best opportunities. It's not all about test scores, because we know our kids are more than a score. We understand that we have work to do, and I'm one to tell you that I have the staff in place that are working their butts off right now to make that change. This didn't happen overnight. It's not going to change overnight. And as an administrator, we want to follow the vision that our superintendent has set out, and we want to make sure whether it's community campus or anything else, that every single one of our kids, whether that parent is here or isn't here, has the exact same opportunity. So, being part of the LPC, looking at all of the information that was given, knowing, again, from our different backgrounds, as professionals, as educators, as a mom, as an advocate for the kids whose parents cannot be here, community campus is our option.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Jessica Hoag.
I'm Jessica Hoag from, uh, Cox's Creek, Kentucky. Um, so I have a lot to say, so I'm gonna just try to get through it. The educational inequities for students of Nelson County has been a problem for far too many years. I'm not sure why we have to keep explaining this, but it does not make sense for a county our size to have four middle schools. That means that resources dedicated to middle school opportunities are divided by four. Under the community campus model, we would be dividing those resources by two, and our middle schoolers would begin to explore their passions much earlier in life. Wes Bradley is the first superintendent that our district has had that looked at the entire district, recognized what did not make sense, and took a stand to make a powerful change in the lives of all students in our district, not just one group. Not only did he make a change, he stood up and took the heat and the criticism for two years and stood behind the decisions that he made. So now it's time for our board members to stand behind their statements and their decisions. To say that a third grader is not on a third grade reading level does not say that our teachers are not teaching literacy. Thankfully, our teachers and our schools are equipped with literacy specialists that are working to support those students every single day. I emailed every single board member. I'm a, I'm a parent of a two-year-old who I want to go grow up in this district, just like I did. I emailed every single board member, "Thank you all for your responses." Um, Amanda and David, you are the newest board members. Thank you for your responses. They were sensible, they were respectful, but I am going to just call it out that, um, both said that they have to, they need more time, they need more information, so we don't need to be voting on this. Um, but lastly, you see everybody that showed up today? This needs to continue. Cox's Creek and New Haven, you need to hold your representatives accountable. They do not represent one angry group in the county, they represent us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lance Filiatro.
Hello, I'm Lance Filiatro. Most of you probably don't know me, 'cause it's usually my wife here, but she's out of town tonight, and she said that if I don't get up and say something, that she wasn't gonna come home. So, uh, so, uh, anyway, I was just, I don't know if anyone was really counting, but I've got, um, thirty-five against voting for the merge tonight, and I've got one for, um, so I make that thirty-six for us, um, so that's pretty overwhelming. But, um, so I have, I actually live in Washington County, and, uh, we choose to send, or we're going to choose to send both of our kids to Thomas Nelson, um, because we like the culture and the size. And, um, and that's nothing against Nelson County at all. I know that they have, um, their own culture, um, but I just really appreciate the school choice. You know, being able to, uh, to have that choice. So, um, I'm not gonna stand up here very long, that's all I've got. Just wanted to say, thank you all.
Thank you. Next is Whitney Ballard. Here she comes.
My name is Whitney Ballard, and I'm a sophomore at Thomas Nelson High School. I come to you today to talk about my transition from private school to public school at Thomas Nelson. I am a proud graduate of St. Gregory, um, out in Cox's Creek, and when I say my school was small, my school was really, really small. My mother worked at To, at St. Gregory School, and I went to school alongside my then-sixth grade sister and my kindergarten brother. There were less than two hundred students in that school. To say that I was terrified when I came to Thomas Nelson would be a massive understatement. I was absolutely scared out of my mind when I went there, and I saw how many kids were in that building. I was terrified when I walked into freshman orientation and I saw a swarm of people bigger than my entire old school combined, K through eight. I was, I was terrified, and I thought to myself during freshman orientation, "How am I supposed to stick out? Are these teachers even going to know my name?" And I can firmly say that every teacher that I've had has cared about me, made a difference in my education, and has always taken an interest in every single student in that building. There is a place for everybody at Thomas Nelson. Everybody can find something that interests them, and I found many things that interested me, not just one. I found almost everything I've experienced at Thomas Nelson to be interesting. I didn't hate going to math class my freshman year. I, I was never a science person, and with Ms. Robertson and Mr. Merrifield, I've actually started to love it. I got to take an advanced government class, and I never would've thought that I'd be even good at government. But Thomas Nelson truly cares about their students and wants a place for everybody. I come to you today as a young woman who is proud of her school and is proud of all that we have achieved together. I ask you to please think about this merger and to please think about the opinions of students like me, because if we go to, if we go to Nelson County, our faces will be lost, and we will lose those relationships that we have forged with our teachers. We will lose those caring bonds that we've made, and there might be, um, there's a possibility that we wouldn't even have our relationships with our fellow students. I ask you to please think about this merger and to please think about the millions of opinions that are getting silenced. Well, not millions, but, anyway. Please think about this merger, and please try to consider the opinions of students who are just trying to get adjusted, because I know for me personally, going to a new school would be a huge adjustment that I would have a really hard time handling, and I feel many students feel the same way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, this is the last one. Lane Filiatro. Oh, come on. Gone? That's it. Thank, I, I wanna thank each and every one of you. I know it took some bravery, uh, for those that are not used to speaking in public, and I do appreciate each and every one of your comments. So thank you. Okay, now we're ready for the next item, which is our consent agenda. This includes our monthly financial report, leaves of absence, minutes from previous meeting, fundraiser request, overnight out-of-state field trip request, shortened school day, and BE SP TA informational request. These were sent to us previously in a packet. So do I hear a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Ms., Ms. Berry, just one thing that may want to have clarification on, the shortened school day waiver, because I did have a parent...
Oh, okay.
...make a, um, a question or a comment about it, and that is typically, if I'm correct, uh, Ms., Ms. Tucker, that is, that is for a student who has identified, um, needs that requires their IEP requires this shortened hel, day, correct? Thank you.
Okay.
Based upon that clarification, I'll make a motion to approve?
Uh, I have a motion before us by Mr. Jackie to approve our consent agenda. Do I hear a second?
All second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bowling. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, our next item is our annual state and federal compliance. Uh, our first item is personal notification, personnel notifications, and that is something that we take no motion on. The next, Part B, is our grant acceptance and job descriptions. That's Dr. Karen Lee, Madeline Tucker, and Stacy Holderman.
Good evening. In October, we came to you and asked for the board approval to apply for a mental health grant through the United States Department of Education. They had an unusually quick turnaround process for this competition, and last week, we received notice that we were selected for funding for this program. And so I'm going to share with you some information about that. When we look at grant applications, we talk about how those fit within our ecosystem and the benefit that it will provide to our students. And so the mental health services falls in line with the column you see here in red, student safety and well-being. This grant is a sister grant to one that we were awarded in October that also addresses mental health. And so together, those grants will create a system of services for our students. And you'll note that our grant total to date is now approaching nineteen million dollars. Next, thank you. When we are seeking to... When we are seeking to apply for grants, the most important thing we look at are the needs of our students and how those align to the competitions and the opportunities that are out there. And so, everything is data-driven. And when it comes to our mental health services, there are two primary sources of data. The first being the ratio of students to mental health providers, both within our schools and in our communities. And prior to this grant, we were slightly below the state average for ratio of students to provider. Our second source of needs are the number of school-initiated local mental health referrals for students. And so, this may happen if a student has a crisis at school, a serious behavior issue, and an assessment is done to determine if a student needs an outside referral. Also for consideration is our current capacity and success. Grants are not funded for entirely new projects when you're starting from zero. You must have something in place on which you can build, expand, and enhance. And so, the, what we've built upon are the structures for school culture, our care and connect, and the current five mental health professionals that were added to our district in this most recent academic year. That was the basis for our applications. So, on the left of this, you'll see the community care and connect in Nelson County. That was the grant we were awarded in October. It was slightly more than six hundred thousand dollars across a three-year project period. And with that grant, we have funded one coordinator and one licensed mental health therapist, a provider. So, that grant, the board accepted. And shortly, we'll be introducing you to Ms. Stacy Holderman, who has been employed as our mental health coordinator. So, the new grant is the school-based mental health services in Nelson County from the United States Department of Education. The award on this grant is for a five-year project period for just under three million dollars. It will hire six licensed mental health therapists or providers to work with our students to meet their needs. So, we're very excited about this opportunity. And we will share a little bit more about how this fits together as we introduce Ms. Holderman.
So, as we think about mental health in Nelson County schools and the initiatives and the five leaders that we have currently working in our district, we have seen tremendous monumental impact with those families and those students when they need their greatest level of support. And through the initiatives of Dr. Lee and having three million dollars come into our district for mental health is huge. So, I think that deserves a round of applause. That's great. So, with any grant funds, we wanted the best. And we wanted to make sure that leading the systems and all of the work for mental health, that we had someone to lead that. So, tonight, I have the privilege and honor to introduce to you the board, um, our new Nelson County Schools Mental Health Coordinator. So, Stacy Holderman.
Wow, thanks so much. I'm very excited to be here. I'm excited to meet all of you. If I have not met you yet, I look forward to that opportunity. So, just a little bit about me, I'm a licensed professional clinical counseling supervisor. I have worked for about twenty-three years in post-secondary education, uh, teaching for Bluegrass Community and Technical College. As an associate professor, I taught human services courses, um, had the opportunity to teach a lot of students who were interested in counseling and social work. Also taught psychology courses. So, that was just fantastic. I'm an educator at heart. It makes me a perfect fit, I think, to be a licensed clinician within the field of education. In addition to that, about three years ago, I went to Boyle County Schools in Danville and served as their mental health specialist, uh, where I had the opportunity to do a lot of leadership things there, but also see students and help people just feel better. I also, I always say that I have the, the best job because I get to help people live their best life and just feel good. And so, that's just fantastic. So, I'm very excited to see you all tonight, excited for the opportunity. I have to say, this is a career dream to be at this stage in my profession, in a county that I chose you all. I, I didn't need a job. I wanted to be here in Nelson County with your students, to lead, um, a lot of the things that we're going to get to do with these resources. So, I'm very excited about the opportunity. Thank you all.
Holderman, do you, do you take individuals?
I do some private practice, but I won't advertise tonight. How about that?
Leave me your card later.
Yeah.
So, as we think about the awardants-
Ms. Tucker, just real quick. So, I know one of the things that we attempt to do any, with any of our staff in the district is trying to identify what their gift is, what their passion is, and then also how we can make connections to our students. So, I don't want to, you know, get ahead of the curve necessarily on this, but I know whenever Ms. Flanagan came to our district a few years ago as Director of Student Health Services, that she also was able to help us spearhead that, uh, community collab piece whenever it came to students in health services. I always think of Emily Square, uh, two of the students who graduated last year, who because of their work with her in our, uh, health clinics, they are now both pursuing higher ed degrees that are in the health services field. So, there was a student that I talked to recently that they were kind of going, "Well, I may want to be a mathematician, that maybe what is, I'm, I'm going to study in college." Or, "Psychology's kind of interesting too." So, I'm wondering, maybe at some point down the road, would we might see a, some sort of collaboration with students who have an interest in, interest in the psychology field? Okay.
Her team and really thinking about what can we provide our students who have an interest in this? As we think about student pathways and opportunities, when we have, um, high credible qualified professionals in those fields that are coming to our district, the opportunities are wide open.
First and foremost, we have a great opportunity here to actually provide services for our students, uh, which is something that often goes overlooked. And we heard quite a few students tonight, and I think as board members, we had quite a few comments from students via email about what small school environment at high school meant to them from a mental health standpoint. I'm just throwing that out there as a challenge to see if we can also make that connection for our students who maybe have a similar passion to you.
Absolutely. So, here on this slide, you will see that through the grant, we have the capacity to bring on six additional mental health therapists. So, in addition, um, to Dr. Lee, um, talking to you about the grant awardants, it allows us to have job descriptions that will allow us to be compliant with the grant and will allow us to bring leaders to our district to provide mental health services for our students. So, really exciting, something that's going to be wonderful for our district. So, I'll hand it back to Dr. Lee.
I think importantly, this is a five-year, it's a five-year commitment. Obviously, any grant, you know, potentially runs out. And, uh, this is a five-year grant that in time, we'll learn a lot from. Uh, and I think the key is having someone like Stacy lead that process, so. When I was talking to Stacy's previous superintendent, who I'm relatively close with, and, uh, I asked him about her, she didn't know this at the time, uh, but he said, "She's the Laura Arnold of mental health services." So, if you don't know what that means, that means she's, she's big time.
The, the bar was just set at this ceiling for you, Stacy.
I will note that in a future board meeting, likely February or March, there are a couple of other components of this grant that we will be asking for permission to enter into. And those are conditions of the grant. One would be a mechanism where we can retain our providers. And so, we'll, we'll be talking about that. And also, um, second, we will be required to enter into memorandum of understanding or agreement with some university partners and some others in the community. And so, um, quite frankly, we're so early in the process, we're not ready for those yet. So, that will be forthcoming. So, this evening, I am asking for approval to, for the board to accept the grant award as presented. That is the first thing. And second, I am asking that the board approve the mental health job descriptions.
Hey, hold on.
I'm super excited on that. I, it affects me, um, personally. And it's something I've always loved to see this get affect, uh, pushed to the forefront. We need something like this to happen to our children. So, I'll, I would definitely support this and make a motion.
Okay, before you is a motion to accept the, uh, U.S. Department of Education's school-based mental health services in Nelson County grant in the amount of two million nine hundred thirty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-one. That's a big number. I actually got it out. Across from, for a period of five years, ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven. I had a motion from-
I'll give, I'll make a motion on that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bowling. There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Having none, motion carry. Thank you, Ms. Lee.
And do you also look at the motion for the job descriptions, please?
And the motion? Uh, I need, see, I hadn't got to that page yet. So, I have a mo, need a motion for the job description of the mental health ser, service in Nelson County. Do I hear a motion? Okay, thank you. Mr. Jackie, do I hear a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Norman. I have a motion and a second. Do I, uh, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Being none, passed. Thank you very much. Okay. Our next is contract with the Children and Family Counseling. Again, Madeline Tucker and Stacy Holderman.
So, when you think about bringing great, um, leaders like Stacy Holderman to our district, Stacy has already started in the, the quick, little over a month that she's been with us networking with providers for mental health agencies across our region. And CAFKA is what they're called, has reached out. We connected with CAFKA. They're based out of Harrodsburg. They would just be like an Astra or Communicare or JP Interventions. It comes to no cost to our district. And they are licensed quality mental health providers that can offer our students services. So, Stacy's going to talk just briefly about CAFKA.
So, CAFKA is an agency that I have used for years and they have served our students very well. Uh, one thing that's exciting about them that may set them apart from other agencies is they have been in business for about twenty-three years. So, they are well-established. They have approximately twenty-five clinical therapists on staff. They have a strong case management staff as well. And they do great training across the state for mental health providers. So, really excited to bring this opportunity in for us to have another resource to pull from.
So, again, this, um, memorandum is, comes of no cost to the district. This would just be services for our students. So, tonight, just asking of your approval to have CAFKA support Nelson County schools.
What that acronym stands for?
Children and Family Counseling and Associates.
I'm glad I asked. Okay. Do I hear a motion?
So, based on the fact we've been told that you are the Laura Arnold of mental health, and you've worked with this organization before, I'll make a motion to enter into the memorandum of understanding.
Okay, I have a motion. Need a second?
Yeah, one second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of accepting the memorandum of health services, please say?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Okay. Our next item is our annual physical, I'm sorry, annual financial audit report.
Good evening. Good evening. You can't turn an auditor loose with a microphone, just asking for trouble. Anyways, earlier before the meeting, we got to meet with you all for just a second and hand out copies of the audit report that we completed a couple of weeks ago, I guess. I want to take a few minutes, we got to meet with you, but I want to kind of give you a background on our audit firm. Uh, this is Beth Francis. She and I are the partners at Patrick and Associates. Uh, we both worked for the state auditor's office for the tenure of our careers for, uh, twenty-some years. We'll just leave it at that. But together, we both have about fifty-six years of combined governmental audit experience. We both started out at the field auditor level, very young in our careers. Uh, Beth worked her way up to become the branch manager in central Kentucky, where she served there for about thirteen years, I believe. And, uh, I ended up being the little nerd over in quality assurance for about the last seven years of my, uh, career there, where we did various trainings together. Yes, I did the desk reviews. I kind of spearheaded that project during that, my time there as quality assurance manager, where we actually did the desk reviews with KDE on the, uh, actual one hundred and eighty school districts in the state of Kentucky each year. So, we've reviewed all these audit reports that we are now working to do. So, um, we're glad to report that when we, uh, completed the audit, we are issuing an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level opinion you can get. Of course, we did our audit in accordance with governmental auditing standards, uh, generally accepted auditing standards and uniform guidance, which uniform guidance relates to your federal compliance and internal control of your federal grants and monies that you receive. We found no issues in regard to the internal control or the preparation of the financial statements or with the, uh, internal control or the compliance with your federal grants requirements. Uh, we also did not have any issues related to student activity funds. So, um, in doing that, you know, we test things such as, um, tying things back to your financial statements. We look at the internal control, the policies and procedures in place, and we assess those and try to give guidance if we see issues that might, uh, come to our attention, that need attention by the staff there at the board. So, um- Yes, wonderful cooperation. Superintendent Bradley, Jessica, and the staff of the board, they're very cooperative, very responsive to any type of information requests that we had. This was also a transition year for you all, as Jessica is a new fin, finance officer. We're going to commend her. I think even during all of this, I think she might have been a little bit sick on us as well, so, but we worked through that. And that's one thing that we pride ourselves in, is being able to work with people and be cognizant of their other daily activities and duties and get the audit done. So, in a timely and efficient manner, so. With that being said, I guess, or- Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to work with you all. I'm trying to get- No, um, but we did, we enjoyed working with everyone here. So, if, do you all have any questions or?
Yeah, you know, I just have one question because a lot of times, people will ask about auditing public entities. And, you know, in our local newspapers, we always see every year, there's that little ad that gets placed that talks about, uh, revenues, expenses, and all that. And typically, people think of audits as being about money. And that's part of it. Uh, you know, in fact, as I've looked through this, I see places where you have focused in on certain dollar amounts and ensuring that, uh, funds were used properly. But the audit is much more than that, cor, correct?
Yes.
In that it also talks about processes, its procedures. Did you follow K A Rs and K R Ss that are in place? And that's also part of the work that you do as auditors, correct?
Yes.
So-
In the contract with, that we all have to sign with KDE, it also lists a lot of those requirements. And we test those under compliance section. So, there are certain ones they want to make sure you're following. And then there's also ones according to auditing standards, we have to make sure you're following in federal guidelines, so.
And, and I wanted to make sure to point that out because, again, a lot of times, people think it's just doing the addition, subtraction, did the ledger sheet balance out correctly? Were funds spent the right way? But it is much more than that. It does look at whether or not there are any, uh, issues, practices, things that may need to be addressed, corrected. And from what you just said, what, what label did you give this audit that's the highest?
Uh, we call it a unmodified, in auditor's term, but most people refer to it as a clean audit opinion. But unmodified, everybody's like, "What does that mean?" So, but there's just clean audit opinion. There are three letters in here. You have your independent auditor's report. You have a yellow book report, which relates just to internal control and compliance. And you also have your, uh, single audit report letter in the back. So, there are three letters in there and they all do talk about internal control and processes and compliance. So, it is, it's a huge- So it is, it's a huge factor, and a big part of the audit is looking at compliance with certain requirements, whether it be federal and state, federal or state.
Well, and it sounds like too, that phrase that you used, unmodified, is the best you can get?
Yes.
It'd be four-star, five-star if we wanted to call it star rating?
Yes. Right.
Understood. Thank you. Appreciate you all's work with this, because this does take quite a bit of time, and especially whenever you come into a new school district and start doing this, you have to make sure you can find the right people to ask the questions, to get the info you need.
Yes.
And it's, it's good to also hear that anything that you ask for, you got it, so...
Immediately, yes.
Good, thank you.
I've always said an audit is not to find a crook. An audit is a process.
Yes.
You find the process, and see if we've gone through the process correctly, and everything's fine, yeah.
And a lot of it is taking a transaction and following it through whatever policies and procedures are in place. That, so that tests the process as well.
Yes.
To make sure, because you can say you have a process in place, but if you're not following the policies, sometimes that, that can also be an issue too, is, well, they look like they have great policies, but let's follow that transaction through and make sure they're actually doing what they say they're doing.
Because the policies change every year.
Exactly. With personnel changes, or you might realize you need to strengthen an issue, an area too. So that's one thing we look at, and we try to give any kind of recommendations, like she says, we have a whole, we've been around the block a time or two. And so we try to help even just give little suggestions that might not be an audit issue, but it's like, hey, you know, you might want to think about doing it this way, because it might make it easier for you too. So we try to help along the way. And we're also available, anytime Jessica, through the year, we'll have clients call us all the time, asking, something may come up, and they're like, you know, what should I do about this? This is kind of different. Or, so we're always available for questions as well. So we try to make that.
Well, when I've worked in bookkeeping, it is a hard job.
It is.
I mean, unless you've got all your, what they say, Ps and Qs together, and in the process for which it is, it is a hard job. So I thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Well, we enjoyed working here. Everybody was super nice, helpful, professional. It just went really well, so we can say that about that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And our next item is the draft budget discussion and teacher needs assessment. And that would be Jessica Rogers. Oh, we have more than one Jessica Rogers. Thank you.
We combined needs assessment and draft budget into one item.
Okay, I'm here to start the budget conversation for this year, and the draft budget is just that, the beginning. We really don't know a lot. We're just making assumptions at this point, but we're working on it, and we will hone in on it as the year goes on. And I want to start with the reason we're all here, the students and the teachers, because they drive all the decisions that we make. So on a personal note, this is my daughter, Cecilia Rogers. She's a student at Nelson County High School, and she has benefited so much from the decisions made by this board. She has flourished. She has experienced more things than I could ever dream of for her, and she just, I couldn't thank you all enough for everything you've done for her. And that is also thanks to John Hammond and Claire West, the teachers that support her so much, and they're so... They just support her in everything she does, and they really, really, really want her to grow, and they treat her as an equal. And it just shows how wonderful the, excuse me, the collaboration between the teachers is. And that leads to the teacher assessment, which is also something that drives the decisions and the numbers.
So you may remember last week when we shared the data from our teachers' needs assessment with you all, and, which was obtained in our learning design lab, one of our cycles in December across our schools. And from the needs assessment of our teachers, three major themes emerged, which included time to build together. So if that's through curriculum or instruction, but our teachers saying that they need time to build together. High-quality instructional resources. And individual professional development supports.
So we first introduced these results to you all last week. And in between last week and today, we've spent most of those days in schools, working with teachers, just to kind of peel back some more layers around, tell me more about what this means to you, how can we act further on these needs assessment results? And that's what we were going to share with you a little bit about today. So the next image, I believe, yes, these are two teachers at Foster Heights Elementary that Teresa works with. And as you can see, they're engaging in some conversations around the needs assessment results.
So one of the things that emerged from our conversations, and you guys heard that they wanted to build together, is a curriculum mapping team that we're designing across the district. So we're looking from preschool all the way up to 12th grade in our core contents. And so they were in the conversation of what that could look like. And then right now, we are asking our teachers if they want to be a part of this curriculum design mapping team to sign up for it and voice their opinions.
So just last week, when we think about personalized and individualized supports for our leaders, in the diverse learning, learning labs, we had cadres around SDI, so specially-designed instruction for individual needs of students. So we also want to make sure that our leaders in specialized areas are also continuing to get support for their specialty and their gifts.
I think one of the areas that our teachers were really excited about hearing more about was the potential opportunity to have funded, timed together this summer to build and collaborate together, and think about future of programs, and think about curriculum alignment, resources, and strategies, which we would like to talk to you all more about, which is where Jessica comes in.
So over the last few years...
Real quick, Jessica. Since, since we are, we have so much, so many administrators, I wanted to make sure that they were introduced to explain who you're connected to. So, because I think it's also important, as we think about the future of growth, what roles you play, and really, how many teachers you're working with across the district. So Madeline?
So I am leading diverse learning across each district. We have an average of about four teachers per building and until about six or seven, depending on different units and buildings.
So you're working with 44 teachers? And how many other mental health professionals, et cetera?
We're also thinking about school psychs, speech therapists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, as well as different community agencies for mental health.
So I'm Courtney Newton. I work with the 612 schools, so I work with a lot of the teachers that you heard from this evening. And I don't know the exact number between all of the middle and high school programs, but I do know we had around 91 teacher responses that were shared with the middle and high schools, so I would guess about 100 teachers, I would say.
That's right.
And I'm Teresa Henderson. And I work with our preschool all the way up to fifth-grade schools. So I have six schools that I have the privilege to work with. And I would say I have a little bit more of the numbers from this...
You have about 145 teachers. So I only bring that up because, you know, there's a conversation in community that's continued to emerge about cutting the fat in schools. And what I'm going to tell you is, public education at large is under-resourced to do the type of work that we're doing. I think it's important too, that you guys just know, the community knows you, many of these people have not been here tonight. And I think that's just a part of our conversation, as we look to the future. There's a lot of fake news out there. We've been fighting it for 20 months. One of those is about administrative costs, and I would encourage any of you guys to open record request me. I can send you all the salaries from the central office for the last five years that will show that we've continued to reduce costs while increasing teacher pay over the past five years. I share that because there's only so much fake news that we can handle before we acknowledge the truth. We continue to want to give more and more back to our schools, and we'll continue to do that. So again, please do open record request me. I can send all the, all of the administrative costs at our central office over the last five years. Now we can talk about teacher pay.
Over the last few years, we have increased salaries of our certified staff by quite a bit. As you can see through the years, 1%, 3.5%, 5%, another 2.5%. And of course, we hope to do another 2.5% and to fund the leadership pathways. But it's my job to analyze these numbers and see if we can sustain this and see if it's possible. And that all will depend on so many different factors and decisions that need to be made. We've also increased our salaries of our operation leaders. In our cafes, transportation, and maintenance, the salaries have increased anywhere from 23% to 77%. When there was an overhaul of the salary table, our lowest-paid employees saw the biggest increase in their pay. And we've done all that in spite of the obstacles that we face. As you know, our SEEK funding is not always fair, and as a result of that, our average, the average federal and state funding for the counties in Kentucky is quite higher than what we receive. And on top of that, as our county grows and our assessments grow, our general fund loses money. In fact, just this year, if the assessments are increased as much as the state predicts, we could lose up to $1.2 million in our general fund.
So part of the reason why, really, this is a beginning point, is the board, over the course of the next five months, has a number of decisions you're able to explore. Really analyzing the data, determining what's sustainable in terms of staff, staffing and salary increases. We also are looking at the facilities. And any facility decisions can potentially impact positively or negatively the general fund over time. So those are all things that we know we're just beginning conversations about. And I share that to say, we're only in the first conversation of five or six conversations that will lead to much more clarity in this process. So as you look at these numbers tonight, know that they're a very generic starting point, and that gives Jessica really room to work from as we make these decisions.
So for this reason, this is a starting point. So we decided to present the draft budget in a range, because so much is unknown and up in the air. The only thing that is for certain on this screen is the beginning balance for this year. The auditors gave us that number, so it's, it's set. But other than that, we just took the past, and then we took what we've spent so far this year, and we just did our best to project where we will end up at the end of this year. And that would be our starting point for fiscal year 2024. So that number could change, could go better, it could be worse. And then for the general fund revenues, the steps built in our salary schedule are certain. They're definitely going to happen. So we're definitely going to have an increase in payroll, no matter what. But how big that increase will be will be dependent upon what is voted on by the board. And also revenues depend upon, I forgot to say this, depend upon our tax rates. Nobody wants to talk about taxes, but it's the facts. And operational costs, as you can see, they can be very, variable as well, because we have to take into account inflation and repairs that can't be put off, they must be paid. Obviously, there are things we can cut, but there's things we cannot cut as well. And so that leads to the ending balance, which could vary greatly depending on revenue and expenses. And right now, we just don't have enough information to say for sure what those will be. But as the time passes, we'll get closer and closer, and then by the time we get to the tentative budget, we'll be even closer, and then the working budget will be there.
So if you, if you just go back, I think it's important to know that, and I think we've all talked about this, but there's a unique combination of factors that work against our local taxpayers. The state formula is inherently against property growth. So the more property growth that occurs, the more money we lose, the more local property values contribute to that. At the same time, that doesn't mean the tax rate increases. In fact, next year, if the projection occurs, there may be no option under which the tax rate increases. There may be, we don't know, but there could be options, every option where it decreases. We won't know that information until July or August.
Exactly.
So we won't even have the information to project that out fully until August, which tells you a little bit why the system isn't exactly predictable. Ultimately, we have a number of conversations that are occurring over the next four months that give us better clarity, knowing that it's still, there's a reason why we carry forward $3.5 million. That's just about two payrolls. And that two payrolls really provide us with some insulation as we think about all the other factors at play. Let me give an example. We don't think the bourbon, we don't think that the bourbon spirits tax, the distilled spirits tax is going to change, but if that were to change, it wouldn't impact our, it wouldn't impact our revenue. It would impact the local tax rate significantly, which we've talked about that. Right now, Nelson County, I think it's 73.2 cents. If the distilled spirits tax was removed, everyone would immediately pay 10 to 11 cents more, and out of the control of the Board of Education, just a good reminder. That would not really impact this. It wouldn't impact it negatively or positively. It would impact the local taxpayer. So I just want to remind everybody of some of these rules that we, we don't get to determine.
Right. For example, the tax assessment, if they raise the tax assessment, our SEEK funding goes down tremendously because of our 30 cents effort.
Right.
And so...
Aren't they supposed to work on that supposedly? They keep telling you, the last thing that we had a meeting in Frankfurt, that they were supposed to get really serious about.
I'd say it's going to take four or five years probably, just to, just to, just to think about it. So just, we bring this up. We don't want to play victim to it. We have to be very proactive. We're in a unique spot in Nelson County. And it takes a lot of time and energy to sort through it, and we're committed to doing that with this team.
Absolutely.
Superintendent Bradley and Ms. Rogers, and so we, I'm going to take advantage of a captive audience tonight. You're not here to learn about finances, per se, I would think, but it's a good opportunity to really understand and put it in very simple terms. The way public schools are funded in Kentucky, which was decided 30 years ago as part of the Kentucky Education Reform Act, is if the local community has higher property values, then the state gives that school district less money. And if it is a county, a community that has low property values, the state will give that school district more money. So it's an inverse relationship. And that's why every time that we hear Ms. Rogers or Superintendent Bradley talk about there are projections that we are starting to hear out of the PBA office, that we could see another large increase in property values come this fall. That means that it doesn't matter what any of the five of us, or Superintendent Bradley, or Ms. Rogers wants to do, it means we will get less money in our community for our school district. It's just the way the math works, and it's been that way for 30 years. Is it right? Is it wrong? Personally, I think there's things that need to be fixed. As Ms. Berry said, we keep hearing they're going to talk about it, they're going to get serious about it. The only thing I've heard is that unless there is a group that is willing to sue the legislature to fix the SEEK formula, it's one of those that they just like to stand there and look at and do nothing about, because nobody ever wants to touch something they either don't understand, or that it's going to make them look like they're trying to raise taxes somewhere.
Basically, the moral of this story is, we just have a lot more to learn and a lot more work to do before we can get to actual numbers and make the decisions.
Well, a lot of the little, a lot, and you know this, Mr. Jackie, a lot of the legislature has no idea how it works. They just sit there and look at each other like, okay, who's going to start, or who's going to, you know that.
And part of that is because those who know the history behind it are no longer there, or, to be quite honest, many of them have passed on, because that was 30 years ago whenever they made that. The other thing, Ms. Rogers, just to make sure that everybody, again, this is how the budgeting process works in school districts. We have to be presented with the draft budget now by law.
Yes.
Come May, we will be looking at a tentative budget, because we'll have more information come May.
Absolutely.
But then come September, typically, around that timeframe, is when we vote on the actual budget for the year, July 1st, '23 through June 30th, '24. I think it's also important that we all acknowledge that the reason why we don't have all the answers right now, the legislative... answers right now, the legislation, legislature has just convened, I think they're on recess right now, and even though this is the short budget year, short budget years are just supposed to be for simple laws, for simple things that just need to be fixed, we don't know, could the legislature do something dramatic with school funding? We don't know. And even in budget years, like will happen next year, it's not until middle or later part of April before we ever know what funding truly looks like for the upcoming year. That's why this is always a draft time. This is always just, as you said, some best guesses based upon history.
Yes, best guesses and just a starting point.
That it? Anybody else?
Anybody else?
No? Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Rogers. We all need lessons in finance when it comes to Kentucky Department. Yes, finance. Okay.
This is really Stephen Ward, Jim Codell, and myself.
Okay, our next item on is next strategic planning, Thomas Nelson Community Campus bids, Jim Codell and Codell Construction.
Yeah, I can start. I can start. So thank you to Jim and Stephen for being here tonight. Just some clarity to the crowd. Stephen Ward here works for Studio Kramer Architects and has been working with the district for the last year on projects across the district, including the conversation tonight about Thomas Nelson Community Campus. Mr. Codell here works as a construction managing company across the state, and they are working on the bids for Thomas Nelson. So I'm going to, I really don't want to belabor the conversation about community campus. We've been talking about it for 20 months, or some, some version thereof. But I do want to let the audience know a few pieces of the conversation about community campus before you guys talk about the bids. It's easy to talk about the money, it's easy to talk about the design process, a little reason as we look back in time. So facility planning is driven by student opportunity, where people live, long-term financial efficiency and quality and conditions of buildings. I say that because legally, that's what it's for, that's what it's about. This conversation around community campus was not a one-year conversation, it's really part of a 10-year conversation as we look at, as we look at Nelson County High School and Thomas Nelson splitting 10 years ago. It's a 10-year study, it's a 10-year observation. That observation led to a number of conversations really in a 20-month process. In that 20-month process, there was lots of dialogue and continues to be tonight, obviously lots of dialogue around facilities. In fact, there were about 25 meetings in 2021, 2022 regarding the community campus structure. There was an LPC nomination process. Just to be clear to everybody in the room, the local planning committee does control the district facility plan and the monies that are, that can be used to access facility funding in our system. Without the approval of that committee, the facility funding money cannot be spent. And at the same time, I just want to make it clear to everyone in the room, that doesn't, that doesn't mean that the local planning committee also determines where students may potentially attend school. The districting and where students can be enrolled is ultimately determined by the school board. Just want to make that clarification. The local planning committee is made up of constituents across the county, four teachers, four parents, four administrators, a few district people, and, and community members. All in all, there's 20 people, part of a conversation over the course of time, they make a decision. Nelson County is very unique. These numbers can be staggering, but over the next 20 years, on the low end, we'll generate $163 million in facility funding. On the high end, we'll generate $270 million in facility funding. That's out of this board's control. The board cannot control the amount of money we're generating in facilities because it's legislatively determined based on the amount of money that are in our tax, in our property values. That led to a conversation, that money, and the increase in that money led to a conversation that was presented to the LPC that looked like this. The first option was what we currently have, four middle schools. The second option was one middle school and one high school. The third option was an east-west junior high school. The east-west junior high school model was essentially, you build a middle school at Thomas Nelson, and you, you have a middle school at OKH. That essentially was that conversation. The fourth option was community campus, which united people within a 612 building on two Those five conditions were evaluated in this conversation. To people internally in the system, many of these things are very accessible on a daily, but program opportunities, access for all students, what was the best use of money, and where do kids live? Those, the combination of that led, led to a conversation that the community campus, the community campus met the most of those criteria. This conversation here is the conversation that everyone tonight is talking about. This is also a conversation we've used over the past couple of years. This diagram shows equity and opportunity. They are not the same thing. Equity means the most opportunities for the most students. Opportunity means more opportunity, right? So how do we get the most opportunities? Equity is for the most students. These conversations really place our current model, it placed our current model in the lowest equity formula at the middle school level. This is really about middle schools, this model here. At the, the two junior highs provided more equity in middle schools because you have two groups of students with approximately 500 students in each middle school, which, as you know, right now, our middle school population averages 238. We have the lowest middle school population in the region. Community campus model and the one middle school, one high school model, both provide the most opportunity to students in this, in this discussion.
Can I make one real quick comment here? On that community campus, it says 1,200 at Thomas Nelson and 1,280 at Nelson County High School, that is not students in one building. That is a makeup of, and I'm sure Mr. Bradley's going to say it, a makeup of, a portion of that is middle school students and a portion of that is high school students separated at all times.
So I think the key number though, is that is coming up tonight as people are talking about, they keep saying class size. To be clear, class sizes do not increase. On a one high school model or a one middle school model, class sizes are relatively the same in any model. That's regulated by the state, so class sizes do not increase in any model. The difference is in the cohort, also known as the grade level. If you look at the right side, approximately 183 students per grade versus 365 students per grade. So when people are talking about equity and they're talking about relationships, those conversations are largely driven by that, that conversation. Essentially, school size is connected to the number of students in the grade level. So I would encourage you to know that that's really what this conversation tonight is about, is the grade level size, the cohort size. So that was essentially a big part of this conversation. We entered into the conversation, what is the future demand of our schools? And we looked to the past to look to the future. It's important that you understand, technology and the economy are going to continue to evolve radically. Over the last 100 years, schools have changed dramatically. Over the last 20, they've continued to change dramatically. If you look at our schools currently, most of these schools, New Haven, Foster Heights, so forth, they were all built in the last 50 years. Those schools, Nelson County High School, 50 to 60 years, all those schools have really continued to be replicated over time, and we really haven't changed anything in 60 years from a design model since Nelson County High School united in 1969. There's been small changes. This school may have closed and merged into this school, like Chaplain turning into Bloomfield Elementary. But in large, the model we've had has been replicated over the last 30 years, which is when funding started for schools. Ultimately, people place and purpose drove much of our conversation. Right now, in our schools, we want to make sure that people have close relationships. We know that drives the future. In fact, the future of school is going to be highly personalized. Because if you haven't checked, go out to the internet, go to YouTube, go to Khan Academy, go to those places that also teach. Those realities will continue to drive conversations outside of schools.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Please, if you don't have the floor. Mike, excuse me, you might want to start that sentence or so over.
Essentially, we came down to connecting people to people. Long-term relationships was a part of the conversation. There's an assumption that it takes time to know people in a community, and that the seven-year model was a part of that. We also looked at increased opportunities for all students. And lastly, we looked at the importance of connecting to community resources. And while I, I think we all recognize the importance of our outlying small communities, we also know that as students take on opportunities and jobs in our community, that being connected close to those opportunities is important, especially as we look to the future, as we build Nelson County. We share that because ultimately, what we want is our kids to be connected to people where they can live, work and grow in Nelson County. And I can assure you, we're not trying to get, we're not trying to get elementary school kids into careers, but what we are doing is helping think about the future of every kid so that they can live, work and grow here in our community, because it is, it is a growing community. This is our current reality. This is a tangled web of feeder patterns and lax optimization, most clearly as we look at our middle schools, where you have 120 to 125 students at Boston and New Haven, 350, 5, 370 at Oak Kentucky Home and Bloomfield. You also know that our elementary schools are also uniquely small, although we do have two that are a little larger. All in all, this web creates a pattern of transition for students that feels much like Each transition creates unique challenges. And that was a part of our conversation. The future of education, if it's going to be successful in 2030, has to be uniquely personalized for students. Students and families are going to continue to make choices about where they attend school, and part of that is about having more opportunities, and that was really the driving force around personalized pathways in a community campus conversation. I share this with you because it's important you understand the original conversations that were happening 20 months ago and 16 months ago. As the board talks about this conversation tonight, know that it's a long-term conversation that's been going on. And at, at the end of the day, there's no perfect model. There's no perfect model to suit all people. This conversation around community campus, we felt like increased access for student leadership, it increased access to human resources, it increased access to learning opportunities, and that's why it was forwarded along. It increased family engagement, it increased student engagement, it allowed for uniquely invested facilities that we could celebrate, it allowed for access and opportunities 6 through 12. Any model that we're looking at, whether that's one high school and one middle school, one high school and two middle schools, or a community campus, has to be organized around these ideas, and I think that the board is committed to such. We also, many of you know, bought 10.3 acre addition at Thomas Nelson. The design of this campus was built around that 10.3 acre addition. This property was purchased just over 10 months ago, I believe. That led to what you're going to see tonight as we talk about Thomas Nelson's community campus and what is the bids on this campus that are part of a 10-month planning process. So from here, I'll really hand it over to the architect and construction managers to take the process and talk about where it stands today.
And I'll talk just real briefly about the design process. As Wes described, we, we met over several months with a stakeholder group put together as part of the Thomas Nelson community. It started in March of 2022. We met monthly, we also met with staff for conversations about security and maintenance concerns and technology concerns. And all of that resulted in a facility that, while it provides the required classrooms that we needed to have, just the standard classrooms, it also provides for more flexibility and more ability to have different class sizes and different kinds of activities in classes than the traditional kind of corridor classroom model provides. So that was the result of the process over the, over the 10 months of, of conversation and design. The, the addition, as you saw in this slide, is the, the blue section in the plan there. The white is the existing Thomas Nelson. One other thing that we really focused on was trying to make sure that, especially coming out of the period with, with the pandemic, that there were opportunities for outdoor classroom space, places where people could get out of the building for, for various activities. So the addition going up to, on the left side of the screen is 16 classrooms in blue there with the spaces in the middle between the classrooms being places where students can break out, there can be smaller group conversations and different kinds of activities outside the standard classroom environment. There also in the project is an addition, an additional gym, so not, so the gym in the Thomas Nelson High School facility is pretty fully utilized. Because this building is meant to serve the, the middle school students and would have separation and secured access between it and the high school, this does have a gym that's separate and can be used for a variety of functions, including community functions beyond the, beyond the school activities. The addition also does have a separate entrance on the, on the left side of the screen, the entrance would be completely separate from the high school's entrance. And here's a view of it from 245 as you come in on General's Boulevard, that's the middle school addition extending up toward 245. And this is the view of that separate middle school entrance that really faces 245 on the west side. We presented the construction documents back in, I think it was October, and then soon after that went out to bid so that we could try to make the best use of the construction market, which has been escalating lately, but also so that we could meet a construction schedule of getting kids into the building at, at the end of the summer when, when it was, when construction was complete. So that was part of what was driving the schedule. Just some views of the inside, this is the lobby as you would come in to the middle school entrance, the gym on the left side, the access to the classroom corridor on the One of those breakout spaces, this is not one of the standard classrooms, but actually one of the collaborative spaces that could be used outside the standard classroom. And again, a commons at the end, again, a kind of a breakout space that could be, provide a different environment outside of the standard classroom. That was it.
You can talk to him.
So we received bids on the project back in December. The bids came in at, with all the alternates, 24,617,240. Our budget, I mean, we were within $111,000 of our budget that was done when the design documents were at 40 basic percent. So bids came in right where we thought they were going to, higher than what all of us wanted, but it's what the current market is. We didn't get, while we're proud that... We didn't get, while we're proud that we did hit the budget, there were a handful of packages that we weren't proud of, and we got single bids on. Having said that, we interviewed, we had two and three in those packages that were looking at it and decided to bail at the last minute, which again is a sign of the market, people are busy. But we did interview the other potential bidders. The numbers are where they need to be. So basically, I think the board has a few choices here. They can accept the bids. Y'all can reject the bids. Or, you know, your bids are good till February 10th. We do have, we have had over the years, many instances where we try to get bidders to hold the numbers for longer, which is, we typically can do occasionally, you know, we may have a steel increaser or something there, but you're rolling the dice a little bit if you do that. But again, we're here to do what the board wants to do.
I have a question. Like typical inflation, we don't typically see cost go down once it goes up.
Yeah, we've, we've been doing this a long time. And, you know, you might get a slight correction, but we're seeing things continue to climb.
Yeah, so basically, there's not going to be time to wait and say, oh, we'll wait until it's down 10%. It's not going to happen.
I do not recommend you wait in anticipation of prices going down. I do not recommend that.
Well, I mean, I sort of want to talk a little bit about the LPC process. I know Mr. Merrifield spoke up about it, and so did Ms. Victory. And that community, that committee was made up of members that represented every corner of our county. Every corner. And three-quarters of that committee approved and recommended the community campus to this board. The Nelson County Board of Education, like Ms. Greading said, approved that to a four-to-one vote in December of 2021. And all of last year, every step along the way, every process that was made on the community campus design, the BG1s, the approvals to get bids, the approvals to work with the facility teams, was voted to five to zero in approval for that. So why would we even bring up, like, to me, I'm ready to make a motion that we approve these bids, that we start these contracts. Our community has been waiting long enough. My school, right now, Boston School, has classes, classes, in our cafeteria, in our lounge, in our foyer. My administrators, Ms. Amshoff and Ms., and our principal, Ms. King, do not have offices. When I go down there to spend a few hours, we talk in the hallway, we grab a classroom somewhere where the kids aren't as loud. I'm sure Mr. Bradley sees the same thing when he goes there. We have zero space, and I'm not talking about class for 20 minutes or one class. If there's not cafeteria food going on in there, there are students learning. And the beauty of that school, the fact that they can take any space, you talk about flexible space, we're using it, and it's not meant to be. But we got a genius group of professionals dedicated to their job of doing what's best for students in this county. And I refuse to continue to make them wait. This plan has been going on for two years, and they've been nothing but excited about it. And they were energized from the moment that I presented it to them before we even approved it on this board. I went down there and I said, what do we need to do? What is this going to do? What's this going to look like? How is it going to work? And they said, go do it, Tracy, get it done. And that's what I'm here to do. I'm ready to make a motion on this to get it passed. I made a motion. Sorry, I did not mean to interrupt you.
I was finished. I'm here to answer questions and be interrupted.
And sorry, I'm going to go on just a little bit more. I know it's late, and I am so sorry, but I want to show how much appreciation. The fact that you guys are here and that you spoke up for the students of Nelson County, I am so grateful. Mr. Mattingly said it right. I am excited that you guys are here to speak up for the students. And you talk about legacy. These kids talk about community and legacy. I'm going to go back a little bit to last, to a December meeting when Ask Me, well, not Ask Me, but Ms. Jeff Dickerson from New Haven, that was his last meeting. And she said, what's your legacy going to be? If anybody on this board is up here with a legacy, then there are reasons. The fact that I'm doing what I need to do to get the job done for the students in this county, that's where my legacy is, with my children, my own personal children, that I'm not making any backroom deals at no local coffee shop to make a plan that's my plan. This is the plan for students in this county. Thank you so much.
So I took notes, and I don't think Mr. Filiatro is still here. I lost count like I think he did. But I'm curious, is Ms. Hoag still here? Jessica, are you still here? I, I see a hand back there. So I'm going to come back to something you said here in just a moment. I'm, I'm going to come back to something that Ms. Hoag said in just a moment. So, and I'm going to connect this back to Ms. Di. Yes, Ms. Di, I'm going to pull you into this. So in 2015, I believe it was, the board at that time, and I was a member of it, was sitting at central office, and we were talking about challenges that our students were facing. And the discussion, it was just discussion, and the discussion eventually turned into, if we keep doing the same thing, we're going to keep ending up getting the same results. And I, I know that sometimes we use the phrase of kicking the can down the road, you know, let's let it be someone else's problem because we're not willing to do something bold and something that is the right thing to do. Often, we attempt to do the easy things, the things that just make it easy on ourselves. And I remember Ms. Di in Nelson County High School cafeteria stood up and, and voiced her concerns about something that was just a, let's throw an idea on the wall with a bunch of other ideas and see which ones stick and which ones we ought to investigate further. Of course, at the time, it, it was me having made a simple comment of, you know, have we ever thought about how our, our K-8 schools are structured, especially our middle schools? And, and now I'm going to connect it to what the science teacher from Boston said, you're the only, or social studies, I'm sorry, you're the only social studies teacher that those middle school students have, correct?
Oh, and that's our only science teacher sitting next to him.
Okay, and the only science teacher. And if Ms. Kugel from New Haven was in here, I would say she is the only science teacher at New Haven. And as someone who was a middle school teacher at the beginning of my 30-year education career, I know that is not right. We're failing you because you do not have anybody else that you can lean upon at those two middle schools. And also those students, we're failing them because they've got very limited options. And so that led to that just casual comment of mine back in 2015, where I said, if we keep doing the same thing, we're going to keep getting the same results. We keep admiring the issues that we all recognize, but we keep admiring them. We keep just looking at them. We keep pointing them out, and then we keep saying, okay, well, let's go on to the next issue. And so Ms. Di, you were very vocal that day in the Nelson County High School cafeteria. Fast forward, 2016, you ran for, and Mr. Pate, who was the board representative from the Boston area, decided he, he was done, he was ready to retire to Florida. So you decided to run. And something I heard you say as you were a member of the LPC in the fall of '21 was, you know, now that I look back on that, maybe that was something we should have looked at a little bit closer. Now, paraphrase you, those weren't your exact words, but I think that's what you were getting at. And now we fast forward to Ms. Hoag tonight. And this isn't an exact quote, but I wrote, these were my notes of what I listened to you say. "Accolades for Wes, to identify inequities, to make the change." And then I did put a quote. He took the lead for two years. And I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, we all don't like change. I mean, you know, ask my wife, she wants to move a piece of furniture in the house, I freak out about it. None of us get comfortable with that because we're comfortable with what we know. But as Ms. Bowling has said, as more than 40 people have said tonight, in fact, the majority of those emails not only say, please do not merge the two high schools, but they also say, the more I have thought about this community campus model, while I may not understand it all, it sounds like the right thing to do. And the majority of those blue handwritten notes say the same thing, whether it was from the students, whether it was from some teachers, whether it's been parents and their students who point-blank told me in person, face-to-face, they came here from Jefferson County because they wanted to be at Thomas Nelson High School. So that tells me there is something that is being done right with that vision of over 15 years ago of having two high schools that have very personalized experience for all of our students. I'm lucky. My story is, I have a almost 26-year-old that went through the Bloomfield Schools, Nelson County High School, great experience. I've got a 18-year-old, same story. He just graduated this past spring. I'm lucky enough that I have what I will call my adopted daughter, my son's girlfriend, who went to Thomas Nelson High School and graduated this past spring. And I see what Thomas Nelson did for her. She became salutatorian of her class. And part of that is because of that very personalized experience that Mr. Merrifield and the staff there ended up providing to her, as they also provide to a lot of other students. So as, as my coworkers say, I've got a lot of words, and I just used them. And it may have been hard to follow my connections, but I will also echo what Ms. Bowling has said. Since April of 2021, there have been public conversations, community roundtables, many of them. I also attended almost every community roundtable. I think I missed the first one at Boston because I was out of town, and I missed one other. The LPC meetings, there were many LPC meetings in the fall of '21. I can start working on that. And I think we heard her say tonight, I can start working on that. And I think we heard her say tonight, she believes, a, a, a very skilled educator and administrator believes, based on her experiences, that the community campus is going to be best not only for all students, but for her students, her kids, her three daughters that don't even live in this county that she... So whenever we say that there has not been a lot of discussion, I call bunk. April '21, many community roundtables. Fall of '21, many LPC meetings. Last year, Ms. Bowling said it well, almost every single public school board meeting had some discussions around the district facilities plan, some discussions about schematics, design, questions were asked. I know Ms. Berry has had concerns, as we all have, about safety of students. What we see today is very different than what the original design would have been. We see that there are separations. And, and in fact, I have to say, and I apologize, because I am going along here, Ms. Bowling. I am appalled, as a community, how we have talked about our high school students and the terror that they will be in a community campus. And that is what has been said. In the Commonwealth of Kentucky, there were 171 public school districts. There are only 120 counties. That means there are 120 county school systems like ourselves, like Washington County, like Bullock County. That means there are 51 independent school systems. School systems like Bergen Independent, Bardstown City Schools, Paris City Schools, Fort Thomas Independent, Science Hill Independent. 51 schools, that's almost a third of the public school districts in Kentucky. And the majority of those public school districts that are independents have some variation of a campus model. It may be that they are only a K-8 school. Science Hill Independent, literally, it's just a K-8 school district. Whenever they go to high school, they have to go to a different district for high school. We've also got many school districts that have on the same campus, an elementary, and then a middle and a high school. I also know of a school district that is K-12 in a two-story building. K-12, one building, two stories. And I'll reiterate, I am appalled that we as a community, or part of us as a community, would say our youth are worse than the youth in those other 51 districts, plus the other county districts that have some sort of campus model. Ms. Bowling?
One more thing. I feel like I'm sort of preaching to the choir here because overwhelmingly, the report, the emails that we have received, and by God, these students that spoke tonight, the ones that emailed, spoke volumes. Do we want these kids to know that their community supports them? Do we want them to look back on their education and say, where am I going to build my family? Where am I going to build my home? What commu, did, did I get community support? Because if you don't think that those kids that stood up here are going to remember that and remember this, then you're dead wrong. And if you own a business in this town, where are you going to get your workers? Because the people that are leaving a legacy right now are the people in that building. And the second group of people that are leaving a legacy in this town, and in this county, and in our Bardstown city, is the community partners that people like Laura Arnold has gotten together because they are making those people and our students feel like they're at home. And if we as a community can't overlook our ability to, whether it's a tax issue or it's, I'm going to have to ride a bus for 10 more minutes, or my kid's going to be on the bus for 15 minutes? If you can't look past that for what's best for the students, being spoke by the educators, like, what are we going to do? Just put more obstacles in their way and make it more difficult for them to do their job and still ask them to better perform? Can you do more, but I'm going to tie your hands behind your back?
Ms. Bowling?
Sorry.
You said ride 10 more minutes?
Take some courage.
No. You said ride the bus for 10 more minutes?
Yeah.
I'm also concerned about the mom that stopped me at Bardstown Burger over Christmas vacation and said, it's about time that you all talked about this community campus because I am tired that both of my kids, they're both graduated from Thomas Nelson now, I am tired that both of my kids had to ride a bus all the way from Cox's Creek across the county. And to what you were just saying, so... And to what you were just saying, so you students from Thomas Nelson, and there were also a few from Nelson County High School, the past week, that's their emails that said, we don't want a merged high school. And some of them even said that community campus model, it kind of sounded like a good idea, but they don't know enough about it. And then, right here, are the ones over the past week that said, please merge the high schools. Tell me which ones are the loudest voices that for the past 20 months have been extremely Ms. Bowling, I think, Ms. Bowling, I think I heard you say that you made a motion to approve the Thomas Nelson Community Campus bids, as well as the associated BG forms?
Absolutely.
I'll second it.
I have a motion on the floor to approve.
You know, what we're mostly forgetting about is the taxpayers and the voters of Nelson County. I don't know, but that's what I ran on. Huge, huge slap in the face to the voters to do that. So that's my opinion.
I'd also like to talk about that. I've been going to meetings for 20 months, and this is a very impressive turnout, and these kids were so articulate, and all the parents, and I mean, there's clearly love for this school. So this is, whether or not Thomas Nelson remains a high school or is unified, isn't what I'm talking about. The community campus has been discussed for 20 months. And I know some of you all, a lot of you all have been to meetings before, but probably most of you have not been to a meeting. But if you've been to any meeting over the last 20 months, there's been just as many passionate people talking about the fact that they do not want middle school merged with high school. It's true. It's true. It's true. In an election, in an election, I've not been hiding the ball, guys. I've not been hiding the ball. I've said from the beginning, if you want, I mean, if you want business as usual, don't vote for me. I mean, I've said it. I've never been a proponent of the community campus. That has nothing to do, that may not even have anything to do with whether Thomas Nelson continues as a school or not. But simply, if the motion here is about the community campus, in terms of the middle school with high school, my opinion hasn't changed, so.
I would also add that I've never seen this turnout at any of the community roundtables or the LPC.
But they did turn out in the vote. Election this year, they did turn out, so take that in mind.
So Ms. Berry? Ms. Berry, there's been a motion, there's been a motion and a second, Ms. Berry.
I have a motion on the floor, was made by Ms. Bowling, second, Mr. Jackie, that we...
And I would also ask that whenever you call for a vote, that it's a voice vote.
To accept the bid and to build a community campus at Thomas Nelson High School. Okay, I'm going to start over here on my right, Mr. Norman.
Hello?
Mr. Jackie?
Yes.
Oh, my God. Ms. Bowling?
Aye.
I forgot your name almost. Okay, and Ms. Deaton?
I vote no.
Uh, Ms. Berry? No. Excuse me? Excuse me? The vote is 3-2. And I said months ago, months ago, that, months ago, I was the one that voted no. There are other ways that we need to work on this, other than this, and spending that kind of money on something that you could spend that $25 million on differently.
So I will pose the question then, because you did, it was a 4-1 vote for the LPC's recommendation. We spent the entire last year at every meeting, and it was always a 5-0 vote. So what I'm hearing is that the time that was spent by the architects, the design team, and us as a board was a waste, even though it was supported 5-0 throughout the entire calendar year last year.
Well, the voters of Nelson County had a choice, and that's what we done.
The question was more towards Ms. Berry, I'm sorry.
Well, you can point your, you know, your question at me, but I made no bones about it months ago, and I'm going to stand by what I voted for to begin with when it was a 4-1 vote. I have a problem with security. I don't want my sixth grader, if I had a sixth grader in with a 12th grader.
Diane? That's offensive.
No, that's my opinion.
You are trusting these people in this room. You're telling them.
We voted on it, let's move on.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Time to move on, we voted on it.
Excuse me. I'm just saying, I'm not going to vote any differently. I don't feel any differently than I did 20 months ago when we first took this vote, and I was the Lone Ranger. And I'm still going to be the Lone Ranger.
So we're going to listen to a quarter of our community. A quarter of our community is choosing for the entire county.
This is my choice. I'm one vote.
I'm not talking about...
I was one vote months ago. Don't even go there with me. It's no differently than, I don't feel any differently than I did months ago. That's just my opinion. You know, that's just the way I feel. I'm not sorry for how I feel. I will not be sorry for how I feel.
Yeah, let's move on, please.
Because I want, I want, you know, what I want is nothing. I just don't want a sixth grader with a 12th grader. Now, whoa, wait a minute. Excuse me. Excuse me. It doesn't make any diff, excuse me.
It's been voted on.
It doesn't make any difference where you put them in a building, they can find each Okay. Yes, sir, I am. Okay, our next, our next project will be the New Haven Revised BG1, BG2, BG3, Jeff Pickett, Pickett and Posthum, did I say that right? Pretty close.
Yeah. So, just to be clear, the New Haven Revised BG1, BG2, BG3, this allows the New Haven major renovation project to continue on. So tonight, we do get to acknowledge some of the potential costs of that project publicly, and allow the architect and team potentially to continue to move forward, knowing that these numbers could change, as well as the design. But this really allows the architects and engineers to continue on in a process over the course of the next few months, that allows the New Haven project to go to bid, just like we just went with the Thomas Nelson.
But how can we go that to bid, when that was supposed to be designed around a K, a P through five school? There's no reason to go move forward on that. If we're not designing the community campus, if the community campus is off the table, then why are we doing that? Now, I want to do, I want to do something for New Haven, but we have to be cautious here. Like, we can't leave New Haven and Nelson County High School without, like, to me, this is just a disaster. But here we are at this point, New Haven needs something. Boston needs our building, like, our people taken care of here. What are we doing? Why are we moving on this if the community campus is dead? Is this not designed around the community campus and everything that had to do with the community campus?
To my knowledge, it wasn't. It was redesigned the school.
It was a P5.
So the design that's presented today is a P5 school. To be clear, the board cannot act on this if it's not a P5 school currently, cannot spend money on it if it's not a P5 school. Just to be clear.
So based on that, as Ms. Bowling said, I mean, there's no path forward to really have even any more real, true, and this, no offense to you, Mr. Pickett, but, I mean, we're at this point where we can't have conversations around New Haven, and what New Haven has needed for decades, that previous boards, that previous boards have also said, well, yeah, it's on the DFP, but we're not going to do anything. So if we can't move forward as a P5 school, then we're kind of at this crossroads here as a community. We're at the crossroads that basically that LPC has been told, I don't care about your all's expertise, I don't value your all's expertise as educators, as parents, as community members, and I don't want what the LPC said. That's the crossroad we're at as a board, as a community.
And just to be clear, in theory, the board can vote on this as a P5 independently of any of those conversations, or it cannot, right? Same as just did the Thomas Nelson campus. So, the current design is P5, and it's organized with that assumption in place. So we can present it, or we can not present it.
Ms. Berry, as chair, what would be the direction you would recommend we go?
Considering I did not know that it was only a P5, because I wasn't paying any attention.
So, Wes, to get it, if it is a P5...
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
And we have a, we have a P8 right now.
We have a P8 right now.
So the process to get it to there...
Yeah.
It doesn't matter what it is right now, the DFP, that the LPC, the District Facility Plan, that the local planning committee recommended, that they voted on, they discussed, they voted on, they recommended to the board, was it as a P5. It has been that way since December of 21.
Essentially, if the board chooses to take an action on it tonight, it is working from the belief that it's a P5 school. That does not mean it's so. In theory, over time, it could change into lots of different things, as you know, over time. But the assumption is, if the local planning committee made this a project, and it was a P5 project, the intention is it's a P5 school.
Okay. Uh, okay, we're going to take the vote. Excuse me, one moment.
So, just to be clear, why we're here tonight to revising this document, we've already approved the BG1 for the New Haven P5 school, okay? We've already approved that. This is an updated document that gives a true and more accurate cost of the project.
Guys, we're fine to, we're fine to move on this as a P5. If you're not, you're not fine to move on it. It's that simple. I can't hear what she said. She said...
Will you move on, I don't think. Did you speak up and say we'd move on? Move on to the...
My recommendation would be to vote on it tonight.
That's what I recommend. Can you speak up, John?
I'm trying to, but I'm also not trying to mislead anybody. I'm not trying to mislead anybody. What did I tell you, buddy?
Pay your attention, please. I'm going to...
So...
Okay, for right now, I'm going to make a motion to revisit this issue.
I just, just a couple of things, a couple, a couple, a couple points of clarification, just to, for the board that we publicly talk about. This is a cost estimate, really, process that we're going through. Additionally, the, importantly...
Mr. Bradley, I'd say let's let Ms. Berry, as chairperson, bring up what she's getting ready to bring up.
Thank you. I'm going to make a motion to revisit this issue.
Which issue?
Which, this issue is the community campus issue.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. There's a motion here to revisit the community campus. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. You want to make a motion? One moment.
Hold on, guys.
One moment.
I make a motion...
So, hold, Ms. Bowling, I'm sorry, if you can permit, so we can make sure, because I know that sometimes if you're not talking right into it here, it makes it hard to hear. So that you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Berry, you made the motion to revisit the concept of the community campus.
Yes, sir.
I second the motion. Ms. Berry then asked for a vote. There were ayes. Did you hear any noes?
This is, this is revisiting the topic.
This is to revisit the topic of the community campus that was discussed just previous to this agenda item.
For the purpose of determining how New Haven fits in the community campus, is that correct? Is that...
To revisit the community campus discussion, because this discussion, Item 6B, hinges upon that much bigger concept of the district facility plan that the community campus is a key part of.
Okay, to the extent that it impacts New Haven, then yes, I would be in favor of that, yeah.
Yes, because as I, as I hear it now, New Haven cannot, we cannot progress, make any progress with New Haven until this item is voted on, because it's a P5 instead of a P8.
The district facility plan identifies the New Haven school as a P5...
And not a P8.
With the, with the bigger picture of the community campus, what Boston becomes, as well as the Bloomfield Schools. And so, Ms. Berry, again, made a motion to revisit that previous agenda item. It was a second. There were votes. Did you get a majority vote, Ms. Berry?
On that, on this, yes, I did get a majority of the, of a yes on this item. Okay, and I'm going to say this. This is the only reason, the only reason I see it differently, and really, there's no choice, is because of New Haven being a P5, being mentioned as a P5 instead of a P8. Do you all understand that one? Because I am not for, per se, putting, I'm sorry, putting sixth graders in with 12th graders. But this has got us over a bear. It's got me not feeling good, but that's just me, okay? That's just the way I feel. So, all in fa, excuse me. Just hold on, we're going to vote on this.
What, Ms. Berry, you need to identify what the conversation is that we're revisiting.
We are revisiting voting on the community campus issue.
And by issue?
Six through 12.
And by issue, do you mean...
Six through 12, and putting a P5 at New Haven when we get to that part.
And by issue, do you mean the bid packages and the BGs?
Yes, the BGs and the PQRs and the whole works, okay? So, I'm going to start again over here with Mr. Norman. This is a community campus. Jackie?
I believe before there's any vote, there should be a motion to revisit and to vote again...
I make a motion.
On the bid packages and the BG documents that are part of Item 6A.
I make a motion to postpone this discussion until next time, so we can really see what we're doing. I mean, I'm shooting from the hip here, I don't, this, I would, I would make a motion to postpone this until the next board meeting, so that we really know what we're doing. I think it's pretty clear we don't.
Excuse me. Please. Please.
There's a motion on the floor. We want to postpone the project. That's that motion.
Yes.
Thank, thank you, Sheriff.
Okay.
So, Ms. Bowling?
There is a motion, wait a minute, there's a motion and a second on the floor to revisit the community campus. Got it?
Yes.
That was the correct motion, correct? Yes.
And there's a, after there's a motion to postpone-
Yeah, but you can't do it until after this motion's already on the floor, okay? So, there's a motion on the floor to revisit the community campus.
Vo, voice vote is requested.
And, and that's where we were going, and, yes, and Mr. Norman voted?
Oh, no.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. I voted to revisit the community campus.
Hey, you might wanna clear that up.
Huh?
Yeah, you might wanna clear that up.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute, I voted to revisit the campus.
That's right.
To revisit it, okay? To revisit, is that okay? I don't have to ask you people, is that okay? To revisit, okay? Now, we're gonna proceed from here, okay? Everybody keep their cool, okay? Now.
So, Ms. Berry, you're saying then we are back to the discussion of item six A, which is what is up on the large screen right now, correct?
Okay, I, I heard Ms. Deaton, though, wanted to make a motion too, though.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Deaton?
My motion was, sorry, I don't know if this works, my motion was to postpone any discussion on that until we have time to look at the P-five implications from the community campus and come back next week with a little more information.
Next month.
Next month, I'm sorry, with a little more information, yes.
Do, motion on the floor is to take, uh, time, uh, to, uh, wait on the, or let us look, or especially these two, look at the P-five discussion and the school. Okay, that's the motion, do I hear a second?
I make a second.
Okay, Mr. Norman has seconded.
Vo, voice vote requested.
Excuse me?
Voice vote requested.
Okay, Mr. Norman? Yeah, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Mr. Jackie?
No to postponing.
No to postponing.
No to postpone it.
No to, yes to postpone it. Oh, God, you all, yes, I know, you're looking at me, I know. Uh, no, we're gonna, not gonna postpone this. Okay. Okay, people. Uh, the main reason being, these bids will be postponed, I mean, these bids will be voided or un-February first, that's how this rolls.
Well, and, and-
That's just what I was informed by the lawyer.
Well, Ms. Berry, I would say it's even a much bigger conversation than that, as what we were getting ready to start talking about, the work that has needed to be done at New Haven.
Uh, that's what I'm saying.
Which is identified right now in the DF, District Facility Plan, as being a P-five school. And we cannot move forward with it until we make the much bigger community decision around this community, what's become known as the Community Campus Mall.
Okay.
So, I need to make, I make a motion that we take, that we do the community campus.
So, you'd be making a motion that we accept the bid recommendations and revised BG1 as presented?
What he said.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so, Ms. Bowling, you're saying-
I make a motion that we accept the bid contracts.
So-
I have a motion.
The motion I hear is, as we are now revisiting six A, to accept the contract bids and the BG1s that are associated with the Thomas Nelson Community Campus, correct?
Correct.
I'll second that motion again.
Okay, motion made and second to accept the bid on a community campus at twenty-four million eight hundred thousand.
I'll, I'll ask for a voice vote.
Uh, yes, Mr. Norman?
No.
Mr. Jackie?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Bowley?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Deaton?
No.
And Ms. Berry, yes. Okay, 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 please, please, we'd like to get, people, people, we'd like to get through this meeting, really, uh, please, you know, please. Okay.
Six B.
Yep. Next, we have New Haven Revised BG1, BG2, and BG3. Go ahead, Mr. Pickett.
As, uh, Mr. Bradley, um-
Put it closer.
Hey, here.
Can you hear me now?
There we go. As Superintendent Bradley was saying, uh, what we are bringing forward now is the, uh, BG2 document, which is the, uh, the outlined specifications for the project, the BG3, which is the estimate from our documents, and then the revised BG1 that, uh, represents that estimate. Uh, when we started the project, the BG1 was already established at five million dollars, and as we've gotten into the project over the last year, uh, the, uh, the building infrastructure and the vision that has been set forth by the teachers and the principal and the table team, uh, we've gotten, we've arrived at a project that's, uh, right at ten-point-eight million for construction cost, and again, that was a result of just studying, uh, what the community needed, what the building needed, and, uh, it was more than the original BG1. So, what we're really asking is for approval of that revised BG1, so that we can go to the next step with our engineers and our design team, uh, and move forward to a DD Design Development, uh, approval in the next month, we hope, uh, so again, it's just bringing us up to date, go ahead.
So, the, I think it's important, the timeline, you talked about the bids, in order to get the bids for the New Haven project, in order to start in twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year, was, was that the, so can you talk a little bit about the timeline, just to make sense of that, how this progresses towards bids potentially over the next few months?
With lead times on equipment and materials, we have to bid the, the project in the late spring to early-
All of that documents BG2, I'm sorry, BG1, two, and three? Okay, do I hear a motion?
Um, um, uh, New Haven, right? Yeah, I wanna make a motion, I'm excited about this, so yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, we've got a motion and a second to approve BG1, two, and three, correct? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Okay. Okey-dokey.
I'm not sure if you guys wanna have this conversation or not, we've talked quite a bit about it, this is just really a vehicle to talk about high school, middle school organization, um, based on current conversations, I'm not sure if we wanna talk about this now or not, Diane? I'm just, I'm just asking if you wanna talk about it.
Board calendar, Superintendent Bradley.
While the future meeting, uh, between now and February twenty-first, the next scheduled meeting is February twenty-first, it is, uh, in order to move the bids forward on the Thomas Nelson Project, it has to be bonded, and, uh, there would have to be some special called meeting before February twenty-first to do that, I'm just being transparent about that, knowing that that would be a board decision to bond it, but in order to pay for the bids, it would have to be bonded.
Yes.
I say that to say, February twenty-first is our current next scheduled board meeting, obviously, any board meetings are given twenty-four hours notice at minimum, uh, currently, there's no future meeting dates unless the board would like to set one now.
I don't know what my schedule is, I don't know what my calendar is, I got it at home. Uh, one moment. Well, uh, myself and Superintendent Bradley will get together on this one, I don't have a calendar in front of me, so, uh, we'll go that route, as long as we get this done before our next, preferably before our, well, have to be before February twenty-first, so, within maybe a couple of weeks, you and I can, um, do our thing. Okay? Okay, great, next month, February twenty-first, and where is that meeting?
Meeting's at Nelson County High School.
Okay, Nelson County High School, it'll be February twenty-first at five-thirty. Okay, our next item is board celebration. Uh, is there anyone on the board that would like to give kudos to, or any kind of celebration?
I do, of course I do, cause this is my thing. I wanna thank, um, all of our guests again for coming and being here and being supportive, not just of our students, but of the teachers that are doing the work. Um, Ms. Holly Smith, I need you in my pocket at all times, like, you are amazing, and I love your energy and the fact that you just grabbed that mic and you just took the floor, um, and, and Dr. Ross, I'm sure he's already left, because he probably had an important place to be, but, I know exactly, like, he had a really great place to be, um, but I love the fact that, that he was representing New Haven, and he was representing the side of town, and like he said, that people gave up on, and the fact that he was standing up there, talking about, you know, he had oncology patients that he needed to get to, and I think that speaks volumes to what this county is capable of doing for their students if we just let the work get done. And I wanna thank Mr. Bradley for having the freaking courage to make sure that our schools do not get left behind, as a matter of fact, they're gonna be jumping forward ahead, because we're doing the right thing as a board, and I thank you for that, for having courage, because these types of things, the twenty months that we have been having this conversation, took courage. Um, and then I wanna thank Ms. Conley for allowing me to go along, and I so wanna redo that again, with, um, visiting some students with the work-based learning and Pat's Place, I don't know if you guys know that Pat's Place is downtown Barchtown, amazing, we have students that are working there that are, um, the most important thing about that conversation was, I asked them, "How do you feel about working in this environment? Do you feel connected to your community?" And they said, "Being in that, that restaurant, and getting to know the people that come in there every morning, they know these people by name, they know customers by name." And I think that speaks volumes for young people, being able to connect with a past generation, and be able to feel the bond that what community means. And I'm grateful that they have that opportunity to have that experience, but more importantly, that we have community partners that are opening up their doors to allow that to happen. So, I will end my long talk, thank you, guys.
Ms. Berry, I've used my allotment of words for the night.
Have you?
I have.
Mr. Norman? Ms. Deaton? Um, I'm just glad it's, uh, nine-fifty-seven, so, thank you all very much, I appreciate the conversation.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion, do I hear a second to adjourn? Okay, motion, second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?